Any citizen concerns, please?
No one with their hand raised, John.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, wait, one, hold on, please.
Okay, sure.
Uh, not another rep, two. Uh, so, um, uh... Well, uh, actually, um, I can't do it, John Mangiari, I'm not a co-host.
I just made your co-host, sorry.
I'm not a co-host yet.
Uh...
Oh, no, it is.
Okay, I was gonna say, it shows on mine.
Richard Keller, her please, go ahead.
Hi, yeah, this is, uh, you know who I am, I'm, uh, the, the person who's been advocating about the trees at forty-six High Street. And I, uh, sent you an email, just, I just got the email. Oh, I'm on vacation in Maine, so I'm checking it out, I know, I'm checking every minute. So, uh, but I did see it about a couple of hours ago and sent out an email back to you guys and to other people, saying that I think that the trees still need to be addressed as an agenda item by the Board of Selectmen.
Well, they are on tonight, there is an agenda item and, uh, it could, um, typically ci- citizen participation is for matters that are not on the agenda.
I just wasn't sure if they're still on the agenda.
Oh, it is, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
We'll hear in a few minutes, Richard, thank you.
And, uh, Niana Tobin, please go ahead. You'll need to unmute yourself.
Okay, I, I al- I'm also here for the tree meeting, so I realize it was for non-agenda things, I'll talk later, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And one more, John.
Sure, thank you.
Uh, Fran Arst, well, please go ahead. You have to unmute yourself.
Hi there. Um, I don't know when the proper moment to, um, request that, uh, consent item number sixteen be tabled. Uh, um, and that's the appointment of the DEIC Commission and, um, I di- I was just understanding that the deadline for letters of interest was September seventeenth.
Yeah, Fran, um, we saw your letter and I will gladly, uh, put that item on hold so we can have a d- a, a, a public discussion.
Great, thank you.
Okay? Thank you. David, are there any other citizens?
That's all, John.
Okay. Um, so for, uh, the, the, uh, Chair update, um, mine is brief, um, uh, um, we have, uh, Dean had wanted us to get back as soon as we can on a, uh, first and third, uh, Monday of the month meeting schedule. Uh, we won't be able to do that in September. Um, our me- our two meetings in September will be on the, uh, on the fourteenth, which is a week after Labor Day, which would be the first Monday. And then our second meeting will be two weeks later on the twenty-eighth. Beginning in October and for October, November and December, we can meet on the, uh, first and third Mondays and get back on track. So, um, uh, the manager's update, John?
Hi, thank you, I'm just working with Joan, uh, she does have an internet issue. She's gonna try to call in, so, um, stay tuned. Uh, in terms of updates from the manager's office, uh, we've been busy, uh, continuing to address concerns related to COVID-nineteen. Current case numbers are, uh, there's currently six active cases in town. And the number has been, um, generally steady in the two, three, four, uh, five range over the last six to seven weeks. And it peaked up to seven, yes, uh, Friday or Saturday, it's back down to six now, so, um, nothing alarming, uh, we are updating our website. Initially, we're doing it daily, um, but we've transitioned to a weekly update on Wednesday afternoons, just to try to, uh, have a, a more, uh, sustainable pattern for how we're doing this. If there is a reason to provide an update in the interim, we certainly would. Um, but I just wanted to make sure the public knows that. Uh, other items, uh, job with John program, we've been doing every week, uh, we've, we've had some really good guests. And, uh, we'll continue to talk about COVID matters and other things, so I encourage people to check that out. Uh, we'll be inviting guests to talk about the upcoming special town meeting, uh, this week and probably next week as well, uh, so. And all, other than that, there's a lot of work going on around town, if you've come to Town Hall to do early voting, um, you may have noticed some activity behind the Town Hall, the Ace of Harlem Project. Uh, we, we've, uh, started that selective demolition. And we're also, uh, the Sports Million Project at Narrow Park. We're getting close on that, so we look forward to inviting the Board of Selectmen to some type of ribbon cutting, I don't know if we can do it the way we normally would, but we'll, we'll do something. Uh, and it'll be exciting to, to get that facility up and running. Uh, we, there's some sidewalk work going on in town, you may have noticed the culvert project that we've been trying to do for three years, we finally were able to do it, uh, earlier this summer. And now we have some just finished up paving and other things to do related to that. But we also put in some new sidewalk on the corner of Summer and Central, so hopefully you've been, oh, you'll start walking there if you haven't already. And we just completed an overhaul to the walkways at the public face, public safety facility. Uh, those are things that were in need of some updates. Uh, early voting is going really well, it's been a great, uh, work by the staff, by Eva and a lot of, uh, people that work in Town Hall to get that going and, and election workers. We've had about fifty people i- a day, um, Saturday and yesterday, and I don't know the final count today, they're still, they're still open, actually. Uh, but it's been going really well, people have been pleased with the setup that we have. Uh, so we encourage you to early vote, uh, through the rest of this week. We applied for a grant that, uh, a grant notice you may have seen for Racial Equity Municipal Action Plan, which is, we're part of, um, the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, one of a hundred and one communities that are eligible to apply to be part of this cohort. Will it be working with a handful of communities to try to develop this plan? And with the work, uh, that the Board just started, uh, with the new commission being established, uh, we think if, if we're able to get this, uh, opportunity, it'd be a great way to, uh, provide some resources to the work that we'll be doing this year. Um, other exciting news, the North Acton Fire Station Project, we will be breaking ground, uh, a week from today. Uh, we will have a groundbreaking ceremony, probably, uh, later this fall, when things are a little more stabilized on the site. Uh, but that's very exciting and, uh, we thank the community for support on that. I think those are my updates, and I'm gonna try to work with Joan, uh, for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, member minute? Um, David, David?
So I, I have three, three things tonight, um, the, the first thing is the School Building Committee is wondering whether the Board would like an update of the, uh, Gates Douglas Project, um, you know, th- there's work going on on the site, they've now got, um, the schedule order and some c- c- contracts out. So I, I don't know whether we'd want to do that, and John Benson, you can let me know if we wanna get it on that schedule and we can arrange to have, uh, the School Building Committee Chair come and present to us.
Sure, would you, would you, uh, members like that say at our September fourteenth meeting? Would you like an update? Jim?
I've been reading all the updates, that's been okay for me.
Uh, Dean?
Yeah, I think, I think an update would be great, uh, not so much for us, but for the public to, uh, find out what's going on.
Sure, so, uh...
I'll, I'll, I'll connect with you and the Chair, uh, J- John, and we'll see what we can arrange. I don't know if she can come that particular day, but we'll, we'll figure out a day in the near future.
Okay, that, that, uh, the note from Jason Cole, that's the day school starts, don't do it that day. So why don't we look to the twenty-eighth? That would be our, our schedule.
Okay, well, we have to coordinate with, uh, Mary's schedule, so we can figure that. Uh, the s- second thing I have is, um, uh, for, as, as far as the Diversity, Equity and Inclusivity Commission, I have about two times the number of people interested as there are slots on the, uh, Commission, uh, many people with, you know, great backgrounds, I've been trying to interview them. Um, and so, uh, I, you know, ma- made, made good, good progress there. Um, and lastly, uh, not really a committee, but, um, some weeks back, I had spoken to Senator Eldridge, uh, informally about the situation in Brookline, where Brookline was wanting to, uh, regulate the expansion of natural gas infrastructure, but was discovered that it was against state law. Uh, last week, uh, Senator Eldridge asked me if Acton would be interested, interested in endorsing legislation to make it possible for cities and towns to regulate gas infrastructure. And I, uh, so again, John, I was just wondering whether we wanted to consider putting that on our future agenda.
Sure, let's do that.
Okay, so you're, it's, uh, whenever you wanna schedule it, um, uh, that's up to you.
Would, would, uh, would, uh, Senator Eldridge come in that night?
So I don't know if he, he will come in, I mean, we can ask him, but it's, it's, uh, and I, I can get additional information from him or somebody else can. Um, but, but I think we can arrange to have that o- o- off, off, you know, arrange the details offline. Um, I, I, I just wanted to find out, r- report that and then find out whether the Board would be interested.
Yeah, let's do that, sure.
Okay, that's all I had.
Okay. Uh, Jim or, or Dean, member minute?
Um, sure, I have a couple things, um, from the Acton Water District, just a reminder that we've now moved into a serious drought, and by serious, I mean two on a scale from zero to five, it's got a technical definition. Um, it doesn't trigger any extra action on the part of Acton just because we've already taken the serious steps we would typically take at that level of drought. Um, the watering, the lawn watering ban remains in effect. Um, some of our wells are, are offline in order to keep our water, uh, within safe and legal limits. So please be careful out there with the water you use. Um, the second, uh, announcement is from the Commission on Disabilities, um, which, um, up until yesterday had not had a, uh, a listing on the, uh, the Volunteer Opportunities page of the town's website because of a little administrative glitch. And that's been fixed, and the Commission could certainly use additional volunteers, uh, who don't have to be formal members of the committee or, uh, or an associate member. Um, the Commission is a, a, a great committee that works on, um, supporting the rights of people with disabilities, it's responsible, uh, from state law for, um, monitoring a bunch of, um, building issues and other access issues. So it's a, it's a, I just wanna encourage anyone with a disability or a disability in the family or anyone to contact COD at ActonMA.gov. And they can get you hooked up with how to, how to find out about the meetings, how to find out about how to help, and, um, that's it.
Sure. Uh, Dean?
Yeah, uh, just one update, uh, there's been some discussion back and forth, uh, amongst the historic folks, uh, Historic District Commission and Historical Commission in regards to the Fifty-three River Street Project. Uh, we did have some, uh, I attended the, uh, Acton Historical Commission meeting last week. We did some follow-ups and, uh, the Town Manager facilitated a meeting with myself, Selby and Doug Herrick from the Historical Commission. And I think we're getting, uh, nicely lined up, um, and sort of on the same page on that project. Uh, yeah, Fifty-three River Street is certainly an important project from a park and recreation point of view, from an ecological point of view. But also, very importantly, it's a historical resource. So I think now, um, those folks have been brought into the process a little bit more, uh, cohesively and, uh, I think things will move along smoothly from here on out. That's it.
Great. Very good, thank you all. Um, uh, the next item under New Special Business is a hearing on the public, uh, shade trees removal at forty-six High Street. And I understand a, a resolution has been reached, uh, between, uh, the town, our tree warden, um, and, um, uh, Mark Gallagher, the developer. Uh, John, do you have a, uh, a formal, um, uh, understanding signed up?
Thank you. Uh, so the, after the last meeting, the developer, developers team met with town staff and discussed the concerns regarding the trees. And, and an alternative plan was proposed by the developer, which, uh, has been, uh, approved as a, as a field change. And the result is that the two trees that were of concern, uh, will be saved. Uh, the tree warden, Ryan Hunt, did have concern about the health of the tree closest to the street. And so, uh, as a consideration for that, the developer has agreed to make a contribution to the, the town's tree fund in the amount of five thousand dollars. And additionally, has agreed to, uh, remove that tree if the tree warden deems it necessary, uh, within the next five years. So the, the goals, uh, discussed at last meeting of saving the tree have been accomplished. The matter before the Board tonight was a, a tree hearing, uh, to consider the appeals to the tree warden's permission that, that he granted. That permission has since been, uh, the requests for the tree removals have been formally withdrawn. And the tree warden has accepted those, uh, withdrawals and rescinded his approval. So there isn't a tree removal hearing matter to discuss tonight. Um, so that's sort of where we are with the project.
Okay, um, was, was, were those understandings reduced to a writing between both sides?
Yes, we received, uh, something in writing from the developer and we responded both from our planning office and our tree warden's office with, uh, acknowledgement and agreement.
Okay.
And, um, John Benson, the, the developer has, uh, the attorney for the developer, Mr. Bobrowski, has his hand up, if you want to.
Please, yes. Mr. Bobrowski?
You just have to unmute yourself. And get, can I, while he's unmuting himself, can I say to anyone else who wants to speak, please put your...
Please.
...address in the chat? Okay, he's unmuted, John, he's ready to go.
Okay, sir?
Mr. Martin, Mr. Chairman, good evening, Mark Bobrowski for Mr. Gallagher and Seal Harbor. Uh, I was going to, uh, say exactly what Mr. Mangiari said, so I thank him for doing so. And that is an accurate description of where we are right now.
Okay, and we've reduced this to an understanding and writing?
We have.
Okay. And thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome, the applicant has formally withdrawn his request for action under Chapter eighty-seven, Section three. And, uh, we'll hope that the tree survives the relocation of the driveway.
And, John, there are several other hands up.
Sure, let's, let's, uh, Richard Keller, I think he's up?
Yes. You just have to unmute yourself, Mr. Keller.
Okay, yes, um, I'm, uh, I'm concerned because essentially, uh, they've agreed to not take down the trees, but putting the driveway there is essentially gonna threaten the trees severely. Um, from what I understand, the trees, the roots of trees go out well beyond the canopy of the trees, and these, the canopy of these two trees almost touch. So it's gonna be almost impossible, it will be impossible to put in the driveway at the location shown without damaging one or both trees. And so we need to know what measures are gonna be taken to protect the trees, what incentives there'll be for the developer to make sure that happens. What, what recompense will be made if one of the trees must be removed or both? Um, and it should be adequate recompense to, uh, presumably replace with a good-sized tree, and who will remove the trees? The developer's only addressed only the latter two questions. And the third one, uh, about, uh, recompense inadequately. Uh, replacing the trees of these, this size would be based on research, uh, on the internet, et cetera, and, and also from, uh, other people who have looked into it in the fifty thousand dollar plus range. Uh, that amount of money should be held in escrow to give them back, be given back if the trees survive for, say, five years. Uh, as an incentive for the developer to take care of doing things like building tree wells or walls, keeping roots wet during construction. And I'm sure there are other things that I'm not aware of that help save trees that are being impacted by construction. So, uh, an alternative that I had suggested, and with, one that avoids involving forty-high, 'cause I understand it's a very complicated su- thing to do, would be to locate the driveway where the existing drive is, uh, to forty-six. This would put the curb cut in a much more level stretch of road, if you make it safer. It would require a very small easement from the Audubon Hill condominium and from people on our board that I've talked with, uh, I live there. They've said that, well, they've, they've indicated at least certainly in- interest in considering that. And their only real concern expressed was that their legal fees be, be, be taken care of. So I ask you to not accept the proposal as it is and propose to thread, propose to thread the needle between these two trees and in the process threatens them both. Thank you.
Mr. Br- Braskin, would you care to comment on Mr. Keller's remarks?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, we recognize that there's concern about these trees and we certainly appreciate it, however, statutory jurisdiction is for the cutting, trimming or removal of trees in whole or in part by any person other than the tree warden, and that matter has been withdrawn, so there's no vehicle for the discussion of this going forward. And Mr. Gallagher has generously offered to put five thousand dollars into the town's tree fund. We'll cross the bridge when we get there as to what happens to this tree, uh, and any replacement that needs to be made. But right now, I'm thinking optimistically that that won't be the case.
No, I, I understand that the, the hearing was before us under, under eighty-seven for this evening. Um, with the requests, with your request to remove, withdrawn, and the tree warden rescinding his prior order, there's nothing technically before us, um...
If, if you're asking me whether, if you're asking me whether Mr. Gallagher is interested in revisiting his plans and revising them in accordance with Mr. Keller's suggestion, at this time, the answer is no.
Okay. Um, further on, uh, Dean?
Yeah, I, I would second, uh, what you had said, uh, Mr. Chairman, about, uh, you know, we really don't have anything to discuss here. You know, any sort of redesign of the, uh, of the access driveways, uh, really, if anybody's gonna take that up, it should be the planning board. Uh, I think we're getting well beyond, uh, my level of comfort about trying to, uh, redesign these things on the fly in the middle of a public meeting. There are professional engineers that have been dealing with these issues. The tree warden seems to be content with, uh, this resolution and, uh, and I don't, I don't think we need to really go down this rabbit hole right now.
Are there any other public, uh, public comments?
Yes. Uh, Niana Tobin, I just unmuted you.
Yes, hi, um, good afternoon, I live on Hillside Terrace. And I, I left a letter this morning telling my concerns. And, um, I think it is a, it's a, it's very good to know that we can wait five years and see what happens, but I think we need a longer plan. And I'm not sure which committee brings it up, but a five-year plan is not long enough. Um, my letter states that these trees are invaluable, they're an invaluable asset, the ch- uh, fa- the amount of money to replace them i- is not negotiable, is, it's invaluable, you can't replace the value of them. And if there's anything that the town can do and to consider them as, as valued assets for our future, then we need to really be more protective of them. Um, and my, my letter requested that once the trees are secure and not sacrificed, that we make sure the town spends a good deal of money to make sure that they stay healthy. And I would like to know what the, um, if the tree is not well, what kind of remediation does it need, there's a lot of gray area here. And, um, I was also very concerned because the public can't attend this meeting. Most of the people don't know about what's going on because of the COVID, we haven't been able to really com- communicate to everybody. And I think that, um, we don't really know how many people are concerned about this also. And, uh, if I thought what it was them, it, so I'd like to hear what you, what your thoughts are.
Well, as we, a- as we indicated, what was before us tonight, um, was it, was a hearing whether the trees should be removed or not. Now, tha- that's been resolved, the request to remove the trees has been withdrawn. The tree warden has rescinded his order of July twenty-fourth. So technically, there's nothing before us.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so who would I bring up my concerns and issues about the long-term security of the tree values?
Um, Dean, what direction would you offer there?
Well, I think, you know, we're talking about one tree uh, along, uh, a hundred and ten miles of public roadway. Uh, there are thousands of public shade trees out there. I've made the argument repeatedly, both when I was an employee and since I've become a selectman, that we need to have a more comprehensive approach and proper funding for a proper tree department properly staffed, um, for all the trees in town. And those two were certainly significant trees, but, uh, they're just one of a, a huge number. So, you know, as far as getting deeper into that, basically, the funding that's been available for the tree department for many years has been to do some pruning and removals.
Right.
And not, not a whole lot of work, uh, no funding really for long-term care and support of mature trees, which, you know, you could spend huge sums of money maintaining some of these trees, uh, which has never been a budgeting priority for the town for years. So I would certainly welcome public interest in that, I'm sure the tree warden would. But as far as any board or committee, there's not really any such entity at this point that I'm aware of that, uh, would directly involve themselves, will they?
Okay, thank you, I would like to look into that more because there are, I'm not sure how many trees there are that are over a hundred years old and have as, as, are as healthy as these trees are. Um, and I, my understanding was that that area was designated as the shade trees and it was already designated as a special area for, for the neighborhood. So, um, I, it's not a, y- you know, that, how many, we don't know how many trees there are of that age, I understand that, it could be many, many trees. But it's an asset that we don't wanna lose and, um... So if you couldn't tell me how to go, how to proceed and who to talk to, I would like to do that.
Dean, would you have any suggestions?
Yeah, I would, I would think that, uh, you could, uh, confer your, uh, your concerns to the, uh, to the Town Manager.
Mm-hmm.
Let's face it, all of these things all relate to budget. And the Town Manager is attempting to craft a budget, probably starting right now. So here's just one more thing to, for him to put in the mix.
Right, well, you, you all have my letter that I, that I sent this morning. And, um, I would like to talk to John and see if, Mary, there are some trees that have more design, that are designated to be more carefully taken care of. And I, many towns are passing, um, laws to take care of their trees, some of them are not feasible, but others might be. And I think we should look into how to, um, take care of the select number of trees that are designated as special. Just, for one...
Thank you.
Thank you.
David, are there any other...
Yes, there are more.
Citizen comments, yes?
Go ahead, please, call-in user.
Hello, it's Tara from Las Dardes. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, yes. So it's, it's, first of all, I'd like to say that pulling the tree hearing, uh, was kinda tricky, uh, considering that now the hearing, uh, excuse me, the appeal process on the site plan is, is over. So, um, um, I think that's unfortunate. Um, I would like to say that there is something I think that the Board of Selectmen could do today to, uh, increase the chances of the survival of those trees. And that's to declare that the value is, is, is very high. Fifty, sixty, a hundred and fifty thousand for the two. So that they know that there's an economic incentive to, um, to not harm those trees. Uh, with bulldozers and heavy equipment and everything going around, that they have an economic incentive that, that you all can declare that today, um, using these formulas that are well-known in the industry, using a cross-sectional method, um, to use a ten thousand, oh, this is, to use a, a low-ball estimate like that, that clearly doesn't think, you know, even follow industry standards, Dean, to create an economic incentive to just kill these trees. Whereas if you declare the value, it doesn't cost you anything to declare the value, using an industry-standard method, um, I hope that that's something that you'll do, thank you.
Uh, any other public comments?
Yes. Le- Lee Kettleson, please go ahead.
Hi, uh, Lee Kettleson on Half Moon Hill, nineteen Half Moon Hill. Uh, I just joined in because I, I didn't, I did hear that the hearing was, um, not happening, but I just want to, um, a, add my voice in support of these two trees. I understand your statement, uh, Mr. Charter, that there's many miles of roads and many miles of trees, but we're talking about these two very big special trees. Um, and the developer, it doesn't have to cost us money as the town, if the developer would, um, be more careful about where he puts his driveway and, and puts consideration to what the neighborhood, um, feels and the people of Acton feel about big, large trees. It's, it's a growing... About big, large trees, it's, it's a growing sentiment that I hope the town starts to hear. Um, so I'm just here to say that if the developer is listening, he should, uh, consider whatever he needs to do. To, um, protect those trees and I would continue to urge the board, um. To realize that the people of Acton want more done to protect our trees and we should move forward with that, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Kettleson.
Um, uh, John, Richard Keller has raised his hand again, I don't know if you want to hear from him.
Sure, please.
Okay, I'll, I'll be brief, I just wanted to indicate my support, that perhaps obvious of what Tara and, um. Lee said, with one further thought, and that is that if those trees are saved, there would be an advantage to the developer. I mean, they, they, it's their property, they're looking out on these trees all the time. In addition to being citizens and, you know, or using the street. So I, I urge the board to seriously consider, uh, requiring a substantial bond be placed or money in escrow. To ensure the survival of these trees, I mean, the developers are saying, sure, I'll leave them and then, you know, when they're gone, I'll give you five thousand bucks. And I'll take it, take, take one of them down.
Thank you.
And John, one other person has raised.
Sure. Please.
Carol Enright, please go ahead. You have to unmute your site, so, Carol.
I'm sorry, I was not actually trying to get on.
Okay.
I don't know the technology, but, um, thank you.
Okay.
I do second, I do, listening, I do second what, um, Mr. Keller and Lee have said. Um, I, I think it's, I, I am a neighbor as well and, um. Of course, I would recommend moving the driveway, but if there's any way that the trees can be taken care of. Once we save them, why save them if we're not going to take care of them, so I, I do encourage that, thanks.
And, and now, now, now there's one more person, John.
Sure.
Tara, please go ahead.
Hi, Kara Wilson-Cock, twenty High Street, um, I live right down the street from these beautiful trees, it's so important. Um, to, to really take into consideration, um, these alternatives that have been put on the table. Um, I hear the hesitation of doing this extra work of the redesign and I. Um, I, I don't want to take away from these professionals and the time and the care, um. And, and yet it is just so important that, that, uh, if we, if we have the time, why not take it? Um, it seems like there's a fluke here, we're not having a hearing and therefore we can't do anything and yet there must be something. Um, so I, I hope that you'll, you'll hear these voices, um, and that you'll take the time to drive past these gorgeous trees. Um, South Acton and High Street especially is so beautiful because we have these towering giants above us. Um, I just feel like these two trees deserve so much more than, uh, having their roots. Smothered and then we're just throwing five thousand dollars at it, it just, they're worth more than this, please give them more than this, thank you.
Is, um, ju- just, just, uh, one, 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 uh, question, um, i- is, is Attorney Bobrick here now? Or did he leave?
Yeah, he's here.
Yeah. Uh, sir? Mr. Bobrick?
Bobrowski.
Bob, Bob, Bobrowski.
You have to unmute yourself, Mark Bobrowski.
Yeah, that's good, okay, so, um, Mr. Bobrowski, the, uh, uh, this question. In, in moving the driveway and saving the trees. Um, will you be cutting into their root systems?
Uh, not that I am aware of, uh, my client may know better, he's listening in with us. And he's going to text me right now the answer to that question, so hang on.
Please.
I'm sorry, he's, I know he's paying attention.
I can let him speak if that helps.
That would be helpful.
He's texting me. He'd like to say something.
That's great.
So it's Mark Gallagher, if you need to unmute him.
Yeah, he's on, he's unmuted.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you this evening, thank you very much for your time this evening, for all of you in these difficult times. Um, I thought I would add, uh, a little insight, I, I, um. I emailed Tara and, um. And Richard this afternoon to, uh, tell them, uh, of the work that we've been doing together. With the town staff, um, and what you want, and, um. We had a, uh, Richard and I had a conversation, there seems to be some misunderstanding about the distances. With these trees that I'd just like to clarify, the larger of the two trees. Is on the site plan is thirty-two feet away from the work that we're going to be doing. And I, I will give to you that they are, they are large trees, um, however, that tree. We won't, don't believe will be anywhere near the roots with a big thirty-two feet away. Uh, the smaller tree that is, uh, to the left-hand side of the entrance as you enter the property, the right side as you exit. Um, that is smaller, in our plan that we proposed, and this was, uh, from the discussions. That we had a couple of weeks ago this evening, um, we, we moved the road. Within the, uh, right of way. And by doing that, we were able to move away from the tree. We originally proposed a tree well around the tree. And it was discussed that the tree well may actually damage the tree during construction. That's why we removed it and left it to the tree warden when we began construction, to make a determination if it would be helpful. Or if it would be hurtful for the tree. Um, so we thought that this was a win for everybody because we are avoiding the two trees. One, we were going to avoid totally anyways and the second one, um, was close by. And that's why we made the decisions and proposed what we did, thank you.
So, um, so Mr. Gallagher, um, with respect to, um, both trees. Um, you do not anticipate their root systems would be injured or harmed during your construction?
Uh, the tree that is, um, towards the Maynard side, and I always get confused south and north. Um, that tree is far, far away from any of our construction.
That's the larger tree.
It is, it is, and that's.
How about the smaller tree?
That's the tree that's in better health than the small.
Is the larger tree in better health?
Yes.
Okay, so the smaller tree is the problematic tree. Will its root system be injured or harmed?
I, I can't, I can't answer your question, Mr. Chairman, because I'm, I'm not, um. You know, I, I, I understand that theoretically the roots of the tree go on beyond its canopy. Um, the roots of that specific tree were damaged quite a bit, as I understand it. In two thousand and fifteen, when there was a, uh, a lot of work done on High Street. And there was curbing put along High Street, and when that curbing was placed, it was placed right against the tree. And that High Street side of the tree, all of the roots were removed. So I don't know the extent of the remainder of the roots, I mean, um. You know, again, we will do all of the precautions we can, we would hate to lose the tree as several of the people who've spoken tonight, we do see it as an advantage. As opposed to being a liability in our way. So we will, we will do as much as we can to try to save that tree, um. And then hopefully the town can use the donation that we made, uh, to improve, or possibly treat other trees that are in town.
Thank you, Jim, do you have any questions or comments?
Just, um, I understand the, the, the jurisdictional trickiness we're in here so that we don't have any direct, uh, jurisdiction, so. Uh, let me just ask one question about the future, uh, in similar situations. I guess this would be a request for, uh, for the town manager to ask the planning department how we can, um. Uh, surface these issues much earlier in the process, whether that would be, uh, adding a question to the application. About, uh, any street trees, uh, whether it would be, uh, changing the standards for the plans that are presented to the planning department and the planning board. So that street trees are clearly marked, um, or, you know, wha- what would make sense? Um, and you know, what is the, uh, I'd love to hear back from the planning department about what's the right order, uh, of things. Is, if there is clearly going to need to be a tree hearing, um, how, where does that fit in the flow of the process? So that these problems can be surfaced earlier, um, and the only other jurisdictional question I would have is, um. Uh, in the future, or even in this situation, if there is a, if there is, if there is an identified risk. To a street tree, but it's not requiring a formal removal, such as a driveway being quite close to it, um. Where does that fall in the process, what, what town, department or person, uh, has the authority to say? Oh, look, this is going to create a risk that's not acceptable to the street trees, um, let's work out an alternative.
Anybody want to comment on, uh, John or Dean on Jim's comments?
Sure, uh, thank you for those questions, some of those questions, uh, we've asked, uh, internally. And have already, uh, put systems in place, uh, there's a technical review process for, uh, most. For every planning application and we're, we're going to put, do a better job of incorporating the tree warden in the technical review process. Uh, and, you know, to some of the other questions that you raised, which are more hypothetical, I think we can. Spend more time in, in thinking about, uh, how those situations may be handled, um. Going forward, any input to board guys would be helpful, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else, David, who wishes to be heard?
So, Niana Tobin and Richard Keller have both raised their hands again.
Sure.
Go ahead, Naya, please.
Hello, hi, I really appreciate, um, what Jim Snyder Grant and the manager are saying. About putting, having things in place to look at the risk, but, um, I'm still concerned. It's, it's not clear to me how large the canopy is, it looks like we're estimating feet. And we don't really know how far out the root system is. And I'm just concerned that we're talking about this as if it was a small tree and the trees are over a hundred years old. There, and, um, you read my letter and you, there are different ways of looking at how they affect our health, but there's a lot more research on. The, um, we have to be just as concerned about human health as we have to be about the tree health, there's been a lot of changes. In, um, tree management very, since very recently, that I think we should take into account. I'm also concerned that, um, if, if, we only have five or six people who are saying they care about this and it's, it's a concern. If there were fifty citizens who came because they had the ability to come and show up. Would that make a difference in how this was being handled, because I think we are really overlooking a lot, not including a lot of other people.
No, ma'am, we're, we're hearing you, I mean, that's why we're, we're, we're having this discussion.
No, I understand that, I'm, I'm saying that I'm not happy with the fact that we're guessing how, how, there's a way of measuring and knowing. How, how large the root, um, distance is and how large the canopy is, it's more scientific tree ways of knowing. Whether, what the risk is of the trees, so that we could evaluate on these two trees, well, how much risk we're putting them. Putting them into and, um, that, so that, I would like that to be more accurate. Instead of just accepting that maybe it's thirty-two feet and my other, but my other question really is that if there, I think there's much more. Um, public interest in these trees, that they, they mean a lot more than just the value of the tree. To the neighborhood and to the residents of Acton, I think there's a, there could be. And maybe if more people, if it wasn't rushed through, there may be other solutions that would come up. Or rather, um, so I'm just asking about that, if there was more public information. Um, and more public questions, would, could this not be, could this be delayed and had more time to consider it? Thank you.
And Richard Keller, Keller.
Hi, thank you, uh, appreciate you listening to me again, um, just one thought as a possible compromise. If a decision can be made tonight is, would be to, it appears that the developer is not sure. Whether the smaller tree, the thirty-five inch tree will survive. It's, and it's already in not great health apparently. He said, it says he's going to try to make it survive and to work with the tree warden, but he's not sure. Whereas on the other hand, the larger tree, the more important tree, the tree that's already presumably healthy. He's, now, as Cooley Diana, he's guessing, you know, it's thirty-two feet away and that's far enough. One way to, to sort of make sure that happens is to require the, the bond on that tree only. It may be unreasonable to ask for a, a bond, uh, or escrow on the smaller tree. Um, but on the bigger tree, um, let's say, um, but, you know, hold him to his. His statement that it will survive, um, by requiring him to, you know, to put up the money that'll. Make sure they take care, to make sure it survives and if it doesn't, we have something to do, uh, to replace it. Uh, thank you.
And Jim?
Um, just a, a, a comment about the process with the tree as well, um. What we've learned from, from Ryan indirectly is that the sidewalk, um, the very complex. And expensive and as far as I can see, wonderful process for putting a sidewalk in on High Street. Apparently was put in in such a way that it, it has caused some, you know, damage to the roots of, at least of the smaller tree. We don't know what kind of impact it's had on the larger tree, um, so I'm not comfortable with proceeding with any kind of. Uh, bond or assumption that if the tree dies in the next few years, it's the responsibility of, of, of Mr. Gallagher. Um, it could well be that the town has already, uh, damaged at least one of those trees beyond repair. Um, now, trees are remarkably resourceful, they can help each other, they can, they, 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 it may well survive. Even having, um, you know, the roots on one half of it, uh, lopped off in the sidewalk process. Um, so I just a comment about, I, I didn't want to try to proceed with any kind of bond requirement for, um. For the owner or the developer because, um, I, I think the town already has plenty of responsibility for what's, what's happened with those trees.
Thank you, um, i- is there anyone else?
No, no, no hands raised, sir.
Any further comment from the board? Okay, well, thank you all and, um, I think it was a good discussion, um. Our next item would be, um, to discuss and take positions on the warrant articles for the September. Twenty two thousand, September eighth, twenty twenty, uh, a special town meeting, um. We ha- um. Let's just go through it by article, um, the first article is the Piper Lane acquisition. And, um. In the, uh, in the draft warrant we received from Mark Hald, um. We have a, a question to answer, um, in paragraph A. As to whether we're purchasing the property for conservation purposes. Um, earlier, um, in our passport. Uh, when Peter Berry was with us before Jim joined, um, we were, um, um, unclear. As to whether it was conservation or we wanted to, um, allow a for, possible affordable housing. Of one or two units on the McGovern House parcel, um. Dean, if you would sort of pick up on that as to what CPC, um, has in mind?
Okay. So CPC last week voted, um, their consensus was that. The entire parcel, the entire purchase was for conservation purposes, conservation of open space. We did discuss the issue of affordable housing on the site, and there was no support for that. In fact, the uh representative Nancy Cole, who represents the affordable housing interests on CPC. Actually spoke against it, in large part because. They have a more important project with the Main Street Senior Housing Project, which is going to absorb considerable amount of money from CPC. For the next few years, and getting those thirty-one units done there. Uh are much more important than possibly getting one or two units down here on Piper Lane, sort of shoehorned in. Um we would have ended up, because the way these things usually happen. If, if the existing house was to go for affordable housing, most likely we'd turn it over to. Some developers, such as Habitat or some other nonprofit for free, and then they would apply for funding under CPC to rehab it. So we'd end up spending more money for this piece of property, which is already really at the, the top limit of what we would consider. So there was no support. The vote that was taken by Community Preservation is that this is all coming from open space money. And you really can't uh divert a piece of this land. Onto um some other purpose such as affordable housing. The other item is that the uh. I did speak with CPC and they did vote an amended amount of an appropriation of one million, two hundred thousand. This is fifty thousand dollars more than what we had talked about, and this is to cover the cost if need be. For the permanent conservation restriction that has to be applied onto the property. So they've approved one million, two hundred thousand for open space only. So if, if CPC is gonna be the source for the money, I think we pretty well resolve all of the issues. And I think at some point, obviously that under the guidance of the town manager. We've got to figure out some way to dispose of the house, either, you know, auction it off, see if somebody wants to take it off the foundation, take it away if that's practical. Or demolish it. The Acton, Acton Historical Commission previously had visited the site, had been inside the building. They felt that there was nothing of historic importance left inside the house from earlier renovations. So they said if it was still in private hands, they would not apply the demolition delay by law to it. And as you all know, demolition delay by law does not apply to any property owned by the town of Acton. So uh I think it's pretty obvious what the fate of the house is probably going to be.
Okay, so from what you're saying is what we're buying the property for, it's not conservation purposes, it's for open space?
Well, it's.
It's not for historical preservation.
Not for historic preservation, not for affordable housing, it's for conservation and open space. I'm not sure what the exact wording is. I believe council has come up with the proper wording based on previous purchases.
Um yeah, Mark, Mark, is Mark Hall uh with us?
Yes, I am here.
Okay, wha- what was the language that town council suggested?
So, Dean, sorry.
Go ahead, please.
So the, the language changed slightly to expand and to include open space, passive recreation and conservation purposes.
Okay, so are we all comfortable with that? That language change? Jim?
Um yeah, um very comfortable. I'm disappointed that uh, you know, that we don't have an opportunity to do um affordable housing there. But I totally get the reasoning. Um I guess what I'm wondering is whether the uh, the house. Or a portion of it um has any useful use um for um. Passive recreation or conservation. Could it be a uh, a storage area for tools? Could it be a uh, I don't know, a warming hut for a, for cross-country skiers? Or um is there, is there some possible purpose under conservation and open space? For an existing building, so they don't just throw it away, which is a shame.
Okay. Any uh other comments?
Yes, I wonder if I could just ask, I don't know the property well, I've driven by it all the time, but I haven't looked at it. Again, Carolyn writes forty-four Brewster. Possibility of using that plot for community gardens. I know that this town has some. But it's sometimes very hard to get on the list, so I'm actually gardening in Concord because I can't garden here. Uh is that a possibility?
Dean?
I think under part, under passive recreation, it would be a possibility, however. Uh couple of big provisos there, that the parcel is heavily wooded. It's on a slope. Uh it was uh one of the aspects of this that made things very difficult for the potential developer. Is that we know that there are, there are amounts of arsenic and lead found in the soils there from previous agricultural operations. So long as those are not disturbed, they can stay in place. But I think it would uh give me great concern to try to put this into uh community gardening.
Thank you, I understand completely.
Okay, um um Mark, if uh has, has Nina added? Uh any of the bolded, let's see, in paragraph B. The number one-one-five-oh should be changed to one million, two hundred thousand, according to what CPC has voted?
Yep, we'll change, we'll update that to one point two million, and they did add, or she added the six hundred thousand.
Okay.
In paragraph C, sorry, I was in the head.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that that would be, that would be the next one, and then in paragraph D. It's, it's uh one million, between one million. Uh it would be between one million, two hundred thousand.
Right.
Um and the amount bonded.
Yeah, let's, that is.
Up in D, the uh, the uh.
Yeah, the difference between the two, right, yeah, right there.
So that's one, one, one-one-two-oh, and um. Then a question I had was in the, i- i- is the summary, there's no narrative, it's just the two maps.
Yeah, that was also added this afternoon.
Okay, okay, okay. And then in the motion itself, which is in a, a second piece of paper. We would just fill in the, the blanks on the numbers.
And those have been filled in, I'm showing that on the screen there too.
Okay. So um from board members, are there any questions and comments on article? Further questions and comments on article one? Uh David?
I was just gonna move to recommend this article.
Thank you, okay, is there a second?
Uh uh, as edited.
As, okay. Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
Joan?
Yeah, second.
So um then um David, if you would just call a roll.
Okay, uh Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Ms. Ms. Charter? Uh Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And I'll also say aye, so that's unanimous.
Okay, then um. Um moving to article two, which is to amend the town charter, which is a name change from the Board of Select into the Select Board. Um there were, um, there's no uh questions uh that I see in the. Uh from the text, are there any comments from the board members, questions? So if there are any, uh may have a motion then to recommend the article? David?
Move to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, then uh uh David, if you would call the roll again, please.
Uh Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
No.
Mr. Charter?
No.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And I also say aye, so it's recommended not unanimously.
Okay, that was a three to two vote. Okay, so um. Article three. Which is um, um authorize the payment in lieu of taxes for the um solar facilities. On the uh Water District property on Knox Trail and Lossbrook Road. Um I don't see any questions in the text, are there any questions or comments from board members?
Just that I'm, I'm, if people do have questions, I'm happy to take people through the proposal, but if there are none, I don't need to do that.
Okay, being none, um do I have a motion to recommend the article?
I'd like to move that we recommend this article.
Second.
Second, okay, uh David, would you call the roll?
Uh Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And I also say aye, so.
So that's unanimous? Okay, then um article four, um the small uh business uh grant program. There are no questions in the text, um that's my article, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to. Uh take them and respond. Any comments from the board? Okay, Jim?
Yeah, um one of the concerns I had about this article uh. Was that we, we don't know uh anything, as far as I know, about how many of these businesses. Um are gonna go under anyway, um and four thousand dollars is not gonna make the difference between. Except in the, you know, vanishingly small number of cases, to 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 make a difference between survival or not. Um and I, I, I'm not happy about the notion of taking uh, you know, town money that's uh. You know, in our, in our free cash and hand it over to essentially lenders, banks, you know, other creditors. It it um doesn't sit right with me. Um so that's a comment I have.
Okay, well, it ju- just briefly uh to res- um to respond to that concern. Wh- what um, there will be quite a few of the businesses that are eligible of the, of the forty-three. Uh hope to speak at, at town meeting, and the thrust of their comments will be. How would they use this money to pivot their business? To give it a better chance of surviving, you know, in the wake of, of COVID. Um uh Kira Marino, um who is the proprietor of the yoga studio in um, in 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 West Acton. Talked about putting in uh an, an air filtration system, so she could move her classes from outside to inside. And they could deal in cleaner air. Uh Judy Romatelli is planning on. Using the money um eh to, you know, get, put on a website and gain online presence. Um to market um her products. Um. Uh I mean, her Opez, who bought Michael shoes. Um putting in seventy thousand of her own money and another fifty of, of borrowed money. Would be similarly to do a website. Um um as well as expanding her inventory with the money. So they are thinking, and how could, we'll use this money to pivot our businesses, to make them viable, in the hopes of surviving. And in terms of the hundred and sixty, almost hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. It represents point oh-three percent of our current cash reserves of five point seven million. Um that's what we're talking about. And um, you know, I think the, the, the other point is, all of these businesses, you know, we, we're not a town of. Of box stores, of uh Home Depots and um. Um and the like, you know, our fabric, these small businesses. And the many other store business storefronts that you see around town. And I think the, the, the better way to, you know, assess the risk is, you know, what will happen if we lose them? They need a boost, they need our support, and this is just what we're doing. David?
So, yeah, I, 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 there's a lot of conflict about thi- about this article. Um uh you know, I, I really wanna help the, the businesses, I think everybody in town loves our small businesses, we love supporting them. I like having them here. Um uh on the, on the other hand, you know, my, my concern is slightly different. Uh maybe than, than other people's, um you know, we don't know the, the fiscal situation the town is gonna be in. Uh next year, the year after, um uh and uh, you know, I'm, I'm a, I'm a little concerned about, about that. Um you know, I, it, it's, it's a tough, tough call for me.
Yeah, it's, it's, thi- this is an, an issue that um all reasonable people um, you know, can differ on. Um you know, I mean, that's, you know, you know, abundantly clear, and I think we are all, you know, very conscious of the anxieties. And uncertainties and, and just about everyone in town. You know, the, you know, we're gonna be living with restrictions for at least another year and, and, and probably, you know, longer. And, you know, there's, we don't see light at the end of the tunnel, and it is difficult. So are there any further questions or comments? So um uh, do we have a motion to uh recommend the article?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Um so David, would you call the roll, please?
Uh Mr. Snyder Grant?
Nay.
Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
And I'll say yes.
So that was four to one to recommend?
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, so um article five is the non-binding. Um citizen um article on declaring a climate emergency, a better future starting now. Um Jim, would you like to offer comments?
Sure, um I, it might be helpful if I could um share the screen. So perhaps we could uh, let me do that, thanks. Okay, I thought I had this here. Uh there it is. Okay, um I, I just have a few slides, I, I know I could talk up about this for an hour, but. I did run through it a couple of times and it was only, it was only five minutes, so.
Yeah, okay, no. The reform Joe Biden.
Yeah, yeah, um so this resolution came from the Acton Climate Coalition, which was formed last year. Inspired by a lot of uh governments that have agreed to these kinds of climate emergency petitions. Uh here's the steering committee of the member organizations that are doing the day-to-day uh planning and outreach. Um but in addition to those, the Climate Coalition now includes a lot of other organizations, civic groups, faith communities, businesses. And our local state reps, and that's not all, uh there's the rest of them. There are currently thirty-six uh endorsing organizations. Um there are three main positive outcomes that motivate the process of presenting the resolution, so uh let me talk briefly about each. Um having the resolution creates a wonderful opportunity for education and communication. Uh so you'll see there the website that people can look at, uh ActonClimateCoalition.org. There, there's also online webinars, uh there's also a webinar that's been pre-recorded, so people can listen to it anytime. And then, of course, we'll be presenting at town meeting. Um the education, at least the science part, is looking to communicate two main points about the most recent climate science. The first point is to explain the impact of the release of this IPCC report. The first point is to explain the impact of the release of this, uh, IPCC report in twenty eighteen, that you'll see the cover of here. It warned us that to avoid a disastrous environmental breakdown, we have to keep global heating to one and a half degrees centigrade above pre-industrial levels. That's two point seven degrees Fahrenheit. And the world's already, already at one point one degree centigrade hotter than pre-industrial level, so we have a lot to do within a very narrow window, and very little time to do it. Um, this is what a co-chair of one of the working groups said. "It's a line in the sand, and what it says to our species is that this is the moment, and we must act now. This is the largest clarion bell from the science community, and I hope it mobilizes people and dents the mood of complacency." The second point we're trying to communicate is the risk of not acting quickly enough because of triggering what are called, uh, tipping points. Uh, these are the points in earth systems that, once sufficiently disrupted, can reach a, a runaway point, or a point of no return. These include, uh, forest loss, methane releases from melting permafrost, and the, the change in the Arctic from ice to open water. Each has positive feedback loops, that is, a bit of change can cause more change. So each of these processes possibly headed for tipping points also impact each other, that's shown a little bit on this chart. And each of them also contributes risks to human instability, including, uh, wars over resources, large-scale migrations, and severe economic disruptions. We don't know exactly how soon any of these impacts will happen. Our best bet for reducing these risks is to act as quickly and comprehensively as possible. Our, this emergency resolution, like many others, sets a target date of twenty thirty for net zero carbon emissions. The next purpose of the resolution is to accelerate Acton's current climate action, and this resolution fits really well with what the town has started doing. The town has already been taking steps to reduce its carbon footprint for at least a decade, uh, partly motivated by green community grants. Um, the next step with the sustainability policy is to agree on specific goals. And this year, the Green Advisory Board wants to create a strong climate action plan, and the board has taken that on as a goal. And the manager is bringing both grant funding and operating budget funding to that same end. All of these efforts gain urgency and additional broad support by passing this resolution. And also, this is a non-binding resolution, and some of the steps that might eventually be taken involve town expenditures, which will come back to town meeting. And having the, this resolution and having a climate coalition helps build support for such investments by future town meetings. Um, the final purpose of the resolution is to build upward pressure to the state and federal levels, that's explicitly said in, in the resolution. Because when we start thinking about getting all the way to net zero quickly, we cannot do it alone. Um, there will need to be an emergency deployment from the state and federal levels to make this possible. Otherwise, the tax consequences of the needed investments would be onerous for town residents. The resolution explicitly calls on these federal and state levels of government for the help we'll need, um, and sets twenty thirty as a target date, understanding that we can't make that date without this kind of support. The idea of an emergency mobilization against climate change is meant to evoke the amazing and rapid success of the US in World War Two, um, when we, I guess, I don't mean me, because I wasn't around then, but, but I read. We modified our entire economy, we created a way for everyone to be involved, and halfway into the first year of the US involvement in the war, the US was outproducing its allies and adversaries combined. We can do this. Uh, we'd be joining more than seventeen hundred governments around the world that do this, but in this area, in Massachusetts, only Boston, Worcester, and Amherst have passed similar resolutions. We'd be one of the first in our area. So by passing this revolu- this resolution and communicating our leadership, we can help grow our local clean energy industry by sending a, a message out about our, our care for the environment and for climate change. Um, pictured here are three completed large-scale solar installations in Acton, and, uh, as we'll hear, there are more on the way. Um, so that's a summary of why the board should recommend the article to town meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. So are there, um, any comments or, or questions to Jim, David?
So, um, I, I've, I've spoken to Jim a couple of times, uh, uh, about this, uh, in, in the, in the past, maybe even before he was on the board originally, but, um, the, uh, it might, my only, I have only the slightest hesitancy about the, the timeframe in here, that, you know, it's, uh, and the, the resolution does not eh, have any kind of even general plan for how to a- achieve this in that timeframe, so it's, I'm, I have a little bit of worry about a line in the sand that would be i- ignored, but I agree with everything else in this, eh, in this plan. And so I, I'm definitely, eh, ver- very much in favor, you know, we, we have to take steps now, or this is gonna become more and more serious. It's already serious, it's gonna become more serious.
Yeah, we can't wait till the year twenty-one-hundred to get going.
We can't wait till twenty-thirty to get going, right, so, uh.
Okay. Any fr- other further comments? Okay, then, do we have a motion then to, uh, recommend Article Five?
So.
Uh, Joan and Jim? Jim seconds. Okay, uh, David, please call the roll.
Uh, Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter? You, you're on mute, Dean.
No.
Okay, uh, Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And I also say aye, so four to one, John.
Okay. Thank you, okay. So we're, um, we're up to the, um, uh, four, um, articles which will be on consent. Um, Article Six is to accept legislation for statutory speed limits and regulatory safety zones. Um, are there any questions or comments on, on the article? Um, being none, is there a, a motion to, um, recommend the article?
So.
Second.
I have a Jim? Okay, uh, David, would you, uh, call the roll, please?
Yes, uh, Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
You're muted.
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And I also say aye, so it's unanimous.
Okay. Okay, then, moving to Article, um, Seven is to accept legislation for Saturday office hours. Are, is there any discussion or questions?
No, that's true.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
And David? Uh, and then, uh, David, please call the roll.
Uh, Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And I also say aye, so it's unanimous.
Okay. Then, um, Article Eight, that's the release of restriction at one-twenty-seven Strawberry Hill Road. Are there any comments or questions? Okay, being, uh, being none, motion to approve from J- yes?
To improve the sightline from Strawberry Hill to Pope Road, so I move to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, uh, would you, uh, please call the roll, David?
Uh, uh, Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And I also say aye, so it's unanimous.
Okay, and, um, the final article is Article Nine, to amend the zoning bylaw, it's a housekeeping corrections for personal wireless facilities. Are there any questions or comments? Right, being none, is there a motion to recommend the article?
Move to recommend.
Second.
And a second, Joan. Um, uh, David, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And I also say aye, so it's unanimous.
Okay, um, Mark Hogg, um, is there anything further you need from us, um, to put the warrant in final form?
Yes, so we're minor, um, but typically we, uh, have a, a board assignment, a, a board member assigned to each article. Um, in the case of a non-petition, it's the, it's the mover and usually the presenter. Uh, it doesn't always have to be that way, but, um, I would need a board member to be assigned to the petition, eh, as well as Article Six, the, uh, speed limit legislation.
Okay, so, so for this, for Article Five, you would need a selectman, that would be Jim, then?
Good to do that.
Okay, and then, um, um, Article Six.
Six. I, I, I could do that, John, if you want.
Okay, David, sure.
And I, I, I'm assuming that I do not need to prepare a presentation on that, is it, usually present? I, it's just if someone has a question.
That's correct.
If, if it comes off.
If it comes off consent, exactly. Thank you, that's, that's all I need for now.
Okay.
Okay, so you're, you're all set to go, and you'll post the warrant, uh, by tomorrow evening?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're all good to go. Thank you. Okay, um, discuss dog park locations, um, right, um, let me just open and then I'll turn it over to, um, um, Joan. Um, um, I had asked that this be, um, put on the agenda. Our, one, our, our final short-term goal was to find a site for the dog park. Um, in my, you know, almost two and a half years on the board, um, this effort had preceded me probably by about six months. And, um, each of the three boards that I've been on, um, they have all been very supportive of a dog park, they've been very supportive of the committee. Um, the, eh, in my view, they have been earnest, um, sincere, incredibly thoughtful, and, you know, and hardworking. And it, it always seems to get stuck, um, on the site. Um, they have looked, uh, time and again at, at town lands, all of which border on residential neighborhoods, and in each instance, um, there's been sufficient pushback and concern from the neighborhood, you know, you know, that the committee, um, you know, has moved on. There is, you know, one site at Main Street, which abuts a, um, a residential neighborhood, Isaac Dav- Isaac Davis Way, which is under discussion. Um, it had seemed to me that the only way we're gonna come up with a successful site was, you know, to explore locations that were located on town, um, recreation lands. You know, I thought we were on our way last summer when the Dog Park Committee invited us over to Nara, and we looked at a site, um, that was on the Public Works property, which, um, the, uh, uh, Public Works objected to, as well as the Miracle Field people, uh, for obvious reasons, the barking dogs would, would set, um, children off. And then we did look at a site, um, on Quarry Road in Nara Park, a one-acre site, which would require taking down trees. It's on town land, and we anticipated objections from the land stewards over that. That seemed to me to be a good site, it was in a recreation area, um, there was ample parking. Um, and I thought we were headed in that direction, and then, um, it seemed the Dog Park Committee connected with the, um, site, um, on the, on the Main Street property. Um, and there's been objection there, as I think, uh, at least I anticipated. So, um, I was the one who introduced, after hearing from one or two people suggesting, why don't we look at the, um, the Morrison Farm site? You know, it's thirty acres, you know, yes, the property is used for community gardens, it's used for, you know, dog walking trails. Would there be one acre in some portion of that, you know, of the thirty acres, which could be in the back, off to the side, um, that wouldn't interfere, um, with this, with, you know, uses of the site, or people's views of the site, people's feelings about the site? Um, and we did get about twenty, I thought, very, you know, thoughtful and, you know, caring letters from, um, you know, people who either walk dogs there, um, or have, you know, you know, garden sites. But, you know, um, it is not the select board, the selectmen that said, you know, go to that site, you know, that was my recommendation, and, you know, I would take responsibility for that. So, um, um, having, um, said that, um, um, are there, are there, are there additional comments on, on sites? Let's, you know, we're not talking about picking a site tonight, and this will be the site, but is there any direction, you know, that we could come up with for Joan, the liaison, and the Dog Park Committee? Joan?
Yes, we walked the Morrison property last Thursday afternoon, and there were two meadows that we looked at. The wa- the lower meadow was too wet. It's adjacent to the pond and the issue of runoff and all. So then we walked up past the community garden in the back, and that would involve upgrading the path that goes beyond the community gardens to that meadow with access for handicap individuals. So that would involve some expense to get all the way back to that meadow. And as you've all seen, the comments from the uses of the community garden and Morrison Farm in general have been quite negative about that. So, right now, Main Street still seems to be the best site. But today, John mentioned the land on Wetherby, on the south side of Route Two, the open field. And the committee has not considered that.
This would be on Wetherby Street?
School.
Wetherby Road?
Actually, I think.
Th- th- this is not, this is not the, we, we did get a, um, an email from a, uh, uh, a, Denelia, a, a Plasser, who talked about, um, um, the, um, the, the fields on, on School Street that, um, abut Route Two heading into Boston. Are we, are you talking about the other side?
No, I'm talking about going east to the right, where they fly air, model airplanes and stuff.
Okay, um, is, is that the, the, it, would it be the right side if you're going east to Boston you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, tha- um, we don't own that land. That land's owned by the Commonwealth. And I'm not sure, Dean may be wor- uh, John may be worried of what our, um, what our arrangement with the Commonwealth is with respect to use of the land. Uh, John?
Oh, we could certainly look into that. I, I just mentioned it to Joan this afternoon, that raised in a, in an email that you received over the weekend, um, so I hadn't investigated it yet, if, if.
So we're, we're, we're talking about the school, it's on School Street?
Yeah, I, I haven't, um, I can look into it, but I haven't yet.
Okay. Okay, um, further comments from board members before we take public comments? David?
So I did put the, uh, the School, the School Street Fields area up on that screen. I assume people can see that. But anyway, my, my, my comments are, um, I, actually, I think the School Street Fields is not, uh, the best site myself, but if it, if the Dog Park Committee was happy with it, that would be fine. But I think, a- and if we could, you know, work with the Commonwealth, they'd get access to it. But the, um, uh, both of the other two sites, I think, are a- acceptable site. In the case of the, uh, the, the Main Street site, I believe that's the best site. And, uh, the comments to the board were running favorable, at least the ones that I saw, like four to one. Um, uh, and I think it would mesh nicely with, um, the, the, the housing development and everything. The, the Morrison, uh, property is also acceptable to me. I believe that property is, uh, you know, we, 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 the town bought that property, it's, in my opinion, very underutilized. Um, uh, we would need to, though, I believe, um, uh, figure out the entire site there, whether we're. figure out the entire site there, whether we're keeping the house or demolishing the house. You know, the the um uh the the town had not agreed, you know, the uh on the the use of the Morrison property, you know, there were recommendations, but n- none of them reached the the political will to move forward. So I think if if it was cited at the Morrison Farm property, which I I think is okay, um, it would need to be part of the, you know, an entire plan from that property. And what I what I would suggest, uh, John, is that when we have a list of sites, we have a final hearing that uh lets people come in and uh, you know, we we list sites A or B or A, B or C and and take comments. You know, it's very easy, um, uh, you know, to just say no. It's harder to say this one is better than that one. And and so that's that's what I would recommend.
I like that idea. Uh Jim?
Um, what I'm really appreciating about this process right now is that it's different than what's been happening the last few years, which is a site gets identified, some objections get surfaced, and then we move on to another site. Uh, what we've done, what we're doing differently this time is we're saying, look, all these sites have pros and cons. We are committed to finding a site for the dog park, so we wanna find the least awful site, the one that will work. And um so I think that's a really good step forward. It lets the Dog Park Committee and the Dog Park fans know that we're committed to making something happen. We don't know where the site is yet, but we are committed to, you know, finding that least awful site. Um, so I I think until we get to the actual process of thinking about the pros and cons of each site, I I can reserve comment.
Um, uh Dean?
Yeah, I uh, I agree with David. I I still think that of all the sites we've talked about, I think the Main Street site makes the most sense. It's frankly a piece of wasteland right now. It's something that the town paid very dearly to buy, uh to keep it from being developed. In large part because of pressure from the neighborhood. The uh, there's, there's no function for the land that's been identified. And it's just a matter of every now and then, when the weeds get too high, somebody goes down there and mows the weeds down. Uh, it certainly is the most centrally located site. It certainly has the best access. Uh, there was an existing driveway to the house that used to be right there, um so there's still a curb cut available. So I think that's, that would be my premier site. Uh, of the other ones we've we've spoken about, um Morrison Farm, yeah, you can probably fit something in there, we know what the sentiment is, at least from the folks that are using the property now. I think because the uh the Morrison Farm site is so narrow, we really have to look at full development of the entire site, which would probably include the demolition of Morrison Farm House, which is another one of our goals. Um, so I think that would be a a good site. And probably the third priority I would put down is maybe the site on School Street, uh which seems to be rather marginally used. It's not a great site as far as it's gonna need a lot of landscaping, it's a, you know, cold during the winter and hot during the summer, it needs some trees. I'm also concerned about any impact that uh heavy dog use in that area. It's a big gravel lens, which probably contributes to the uh water supply from the Losbrook Wells. So I'd be concerned about impacts there, so certainly the water district would have to be drawn in on it. So that that would be my three, but I I think, you know, we've really essentially come up with a shortlist. And uh, you know, I'd support uh having some kind of a final hearing and making a determination and moving ahead with this. If we can't decide it in the next, between now and the end of the year, we should just give this thing up. Uh, we've kicked it around long enough, we should be able to come up with a decision and just make it. And people are gonna be upset no matter what we do. So it's just a matter of making as few people upset as possible.
Um, well, since people are speaking of pros and cons of the sites, um, uh, the reasons given for the Main Street site being a good one are very compelling to me. Um, I know there's there's a concern about the inability for now to uh pass under Isaac Davis Way. Um, so I think we either have the eventually the AHA gets to the point where they're able to do real engineering on the site and they can figure out if there are uh leach field possibilities on the upper part of the site, uh which would remove the need to send the effluent underneath Isaac Davis Way. Um, or um we design a plan where the effluent runs uh diagonally out to Route Twenty Seven and then comes back in, avoiding going under Isaac Davis Way. That's more expensive, but it may be an opportunity to then turn to the neighbors at Isaac Davis Way and say, look, we could spend this extra money and make this work, because you don't wanna give us the right to pass under here. But there's gonna be a dog park there anyway, so, you know, why not save us some money? Um, the um, so I think I think the concerns about Isaac Davis Way uh and about Main Street site are workable. Um, you know, there's the concern about changing the roads potentially to not have cars uh pass up and down Isaac Davis Way. And as Dean points out, there's already a curb cut there that would avoid that whole issue. Um, there's there's lights coming to that uh intersection as well when Route Two, when the Route Two uh o- a bridge gets uh redone, so there may be a chance to even make it uh safer to uh to take a left turn there. Uh I think it, I think it's a good site, um and I have concerns, heavier concerns about all the other sites.
Um, Joan?
Yeah, no, I think that's the site.
Yeah, um, um, my my concern with the Main Street site is I don't want it to become a really divisive issue between um the town and the Isaac Davis Way residents. I mean, each side has cards that they can play, which I'd rather not see them play or us play. I don't wanna see them hold out, well, you can't go under because we won't, under Isaac Davis Way, because we won't give you an easement. And our side saying, well, you know, we could go around you and build a pipe along um Main Street and then c- cut back in, um or and we could build the entryway further down. And that gets closer, you know, to the um Route Two West interchange and and that's that's crowded there. That's that's not, that that's not particularly safe. Um, so, you know, that's why, you know, I encourage the the Dog Park Committee to, when it was mentioned to me, you know, Morrison Farm would be a, I think as David said, an underutilized site, to, you know, find an acre there that we could, you know, turn into a um, you know, a dog park, and that's where where my sentiments tend to be. But so let let me suggest this to to move the conversation along, and I li- I would like that we adopt, you know, David's suggestion. If we could come up with several sites um and set a date for another hearing where people could weigh in on each of the sites. And if, um, you know, town staff and the Dog Park Committee could do some further looking into each site and hear from the people, and let's see by the end of the year whether we could come up with a site and be able to to take the Dog Park site, you know, to town meeting in the spring, whenever that may be, um for approval. So it seems like we have three sites, Main Street, Morrison Farm, um and School Street. Would that be a fair list? Or would be additions to it or subtractions? David?
Do do I I would want the Dog Park Committee to evaluate the uh School Street site before we put it on the list. Right, they haven't weighed in, I think they need to weigh in. There are a number of considerations that they've used in their evaluation that I'd like to hear. I mean, if it if it works, and also we have to do some preliminary work, I guess, with the Commonwealth to see if it might be possible for us to acquire the land, whether that requires legislative approval, or I don't know what it requires, so. Um, uh, uh, you know, right? It it it, I I'm completely fine with that as long as, you know, um, the School Street site meets a a minimum be- benchmark. Um, ab- about the Main Street site, I completely agree with you, John, that we want to have an amicable uh relationship with the Isaac Davis Way people. Uh, but up to this point, they've been no, and they they just threaten and don't wanna talk to us about it. They're, you know, I'd be very willing to talk about the design of the thing or whatever, uh but they're they're not in that order. And I would point out that we, the town, are also uh have frontage on Isaac Davis Way. Right, we're we are as much Isaac Davis Way residents as they are, right? So, um, uh, so, uh, and I understand the the current agreement and whatever, but I think that we need a cooperative arrangement there.
Okay, um, before we come to any conclusions about, you know, exactly how to proceed, could we hear from um um audience comments?
Yes, one second. Kathy Fochman, please go ahead.
Hello, everyone, Kathy Fochman, um, Wright Hill, Wright Terrace. Um, I just wanted to make a comment about School Street. Um, during my twelve and a half years as a recreation director, we spent about eight years trying to acquire a multi-year lease at School Street and worked closely with D-CAM to achieve that. Um, it's currently heavily used by uh cricket teams. There are two cricket fields currently located on um most of the field. You'll see them out there on the weekends primarily. And of course, model airplane uh users are heavy users as well. So I just wanted to clarify that point. And um certainly want to just say that I think that the process that you're identifying is a a fair and balanced way to um come to a conclusion on what would be the best site. So, thank you.
Thank you. I I think the dogs would love to chase the model airplane. Claire, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I have um a a few more comments than I had expected because of the discussion. I I'll try to be quick. Um, first of all, it seems to me that ever for, we've talked about pros and cons, but I I look at it as, um, with nearly every site, you lose something. At Quarry Road, it's gonna be a lot of trees, and that's gonna be required by Stanton. Um, uh, there would also be a segment of the loop trail that would be lost. And I understand that the uh pump track people would really be interested in quit seventy Quarry Road. I know you're not talking about that, but it had been brought up a number of times. Um, we looked at North of Nara, it was heavily used DPW land. Um, at Morrison, it's gonna be serenity and wildlife habitat. And um I do wanna point out that we could not, uh, Tom Tidman and Selby were there at the meeting. There's a, if you're going straight up past the um community gardens, we sort of looked at a meadow in the far back left, there happens to be a vernal pool near there, which would mean we would have to go a hundred and fifty feet around the vernal pool, which would put us in the middle of the meadow of Morrison Farm just to get to the back. Even if we were gonna cut down trees, so you're talking about really putting a a paved road through the middle of Morrison Farm. Um, so that's, that's what, that's just the reality. The other spot that we looked at is underwater half of the year. Uh, I don't even think we could get Stanton funds for that, um and it would be useless to us six months out of the year. So, um, that's one thing. Um, but the the and the Open Space Committee had asked the committee, and by the way, I'm speaking for myself, not for the, I'm not representing the Dog Park Committee, these are my emotions. Um, the Open Space Committee had specifically asked us to try to find a site where we would not have a detrimental environmental impact. The Main Street site is the one site where, in addition to adding the town amenity, which is a dog park, we don't losing something much less valuable. The thing that we would lose is this eyesore in the middle of the town that years of committee work has found absolutely no use for. The wider community benefits of a dog park, like revenues for businesses and improved property values, they're not so obvious, but we can make an obvious and positive impact on that site. Nobody else, to my knowledge, has any plans for that piece of property. There was a vision when the uh uh AHA came to town that it would have this nice park there. We would like to try and make that happen, but we're the only ones that I know that can do it, and we can do it. Um, second, the majority of the objections that I have heard to date, and I've been on this committee for three years and I've been listening to these objections, and we read and we research, but the majority of the objections that I have heard are based in fear and not in fact. Whereas the Dog Park Committee has provided extensive data on the impact of dog parks, much of which refutes those concerns. Um, brief story, I live near the Aspet River Rail Trail, and when that project was first proposed, many of my neighbors were up in arms. They thought it was gonna be noisy, it was gonna be ugly, and it was gonna bring crime. None of those things have come to pass, and in fact, I will tell you, especially in the time of COVID, that those very people that objected to that rail trail are out walking it at least once a day and enjoying every minute of it. So, whatever decision you make, I just hope it will be driven by fact and not by fear. And then I would like to comment just briefly on the concept of going to town meeting. Um, I understand that you've been advised that it would be wise to go to town meeting, but I wanna put out to you that my understanding is is that legally it's not required. Town meetings are very long, they have a lot of stuff going on. We, as a committee who's worked for three years on this, would really like to not miss another CPA window. We need to raise twenty-five thousand dollars to do a match so that we can apply for Stanton funds. If we have to wait for April Town Meeting and hope to get a site approval, we've missed a third round of CPA. We can't start even fundraising as a group because we won't have a site. So you now you're asking this committee to work, sorry, I'm getting real emotional now. Now you're asking us to wait four years, four years. It's a lot to ask and to not know if we're gonna do anything. And then we would have to go to CPA in the fall of two thousand twenty-one. We wouldn't know until Town Meeting of twenty twenty-two whether we were gonna get the twenty-five thousand dollars. And then we would apply for Stanton grants. And in this day and age, I don't know if the Stanton grants are still gonna be around in twenty twenty-two. I really implore this committee to consider the public hearing as the final decision maker. And please try to get it done for us before November so that we can apply for CPA funds. That is my spiel.
Thank you. So Claire, uh y- y- you don't see any value in the Morrison Farm site?
I I don't think it's possible.
Okay.
The only place I could possibly think is if you tore down the house and tore down the barn, maybe we could squeeze something in, but I'll tell you, the people on Concord Road are not gonna wanna Dog Park right street from them. So I understand that the Is- Isaac Davis Way people are not happy. But, you know, as Dean said, no matter where we go, somebody's not gonna like this. And I think that a lot of it, not even based in reality. Look at the pictures that we've sent you guys, read the articles. These com- these dog parks are happy places, they can be beautiful places. It's right in the middle of town, we can make a wonderful gathering place in the center of town on that spot, and we can resolve the other issues. My spiel.
Thank you. David, others?
Yep, uh, Tina Norton, please go ahead, you have to unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you very much. By the way, hi Dean and hi Joan, I've known them for eighty-five years, I guess, although I'm older now, but. Um, I am very concerned about this issue. I don't need it myself. As many of you know, we have thirteen acres, we have plenty of place for dogs running around. But I feel very, very strongly that the site on Main Street is totally, totally wrong. I think it's dangerous. I think that being right off Route Two where people come off, have you noticed the speed of people coming off Route Two? And how about people coming out of the police station? And how about dogs, perhaps somebody leaving a gate open and a dog running down after a squirrel onto Route Two? I am a strong proponent, and Dean, you're gonna be mad at me, but I'm a strong proponent for the town DPW area. I know there's a lot in there, I'll be happy to take any of you down there to show how you can consolidate some of that stuff and get it closely together. It would not take down any trees, there are tons of people walking there, dogs there now. Now, I have to say that one thing that bothered me phenomenally was that I went to the hearing, which was held, I forget how how long ago. But one woman who had been asked what she thought from the Miracle Field, who had been asked what she thought, did not indicate that she was against it until you had that open meeting. And then she threw a wrench in it by saying that her own And then she threw a wrench in it by saying that her own child was afraid of dogs. Well, folks, I went down the next day to the Miracle Field, and I gathered two and a half single pages of people who used the dog park, who were fully in favor of having it. I had them fill out their name, the town where they lived, and whether or not they had dogs. And I don't know where those papers are now, but the fact is that the Miracle Field is not a it is not a threat to the children to use the Miracle Field. Anybody who knows dog parks, and I know them well because when we are in Boston, I use them in Boston and in Cambridge, dogs are not excessively barking at at dog parks. It's just not true. Just not true. Secondly, when I went in to get those petitions, I walked up to the table where people were taking names. There were three people standing there, two women and a man. And I went in and I said, would you sign this petition? And the man there said, yes, I certainly will. And the woman said, no, 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 no. And then I realized she was the one who spoke. You are looking at the word of one woman whose child is afraid of dogs, and I'm sorry. I'm that's not an issue that really is a concern because the dogs don't cause that much trouble. If you use that area where the pile is over by the town, first of all, that's an area that is right by the the residence, by the um uh the park, the recreation area, it's an ideal site. And as I'm telling you, day after day, there are people walking their dogs there already. It would be fine to use that site. And not only that, see if I got everything I wanted to say. Yeah, the traffic, by the way, that's another thing about the Main Street site. How many of you go by there at three o'clock in the afternoon? God help us all. It can take ten minutes to get through some of those lights. And I think having a dog park there is just complicating an area that's getting increasingly full of traffic. And again, I'd say that um I think that's about it. If I sound, any questions for maybe?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norton. David?
Yeah, there's there there are people, Matt Post, I'm gonna let you talk in just a second. Uh but I'm a couple other people who just have their first names in the uh attendee list, and you need to put your full name and street in the um chat, or I won't call on you. So uh Matt Post, you can unmute yourself and go ahead.
Good evening, gentlemen, how are you? Um I I I mean, I I appreciate the uh the efforts uh from everybody. I appreciate the efforts from the dog park committee. And I appreciate the effort from the uh select board. We, as I speak to you as a group, uh you know, for speaking for Isaac Davis Way, uh all of the neighbors, um we are totally in favor of the Housing Authority project, we don't wanna get in the way of the project at all. Um one of our, or actually, I'll give you just two of our real main concerns. This is this is the reality of the whole situation. Isaac Davis Way is a private road. Um and it is maintained by the people who live on Isaac Davis Way. The town of Acton has absolutely no right to Isaac Davis Way. So um David, I'm sorry, but um you got you, the previous owner gave up all of those rights. Uh so when the town bought the property, uh those rights have been uh have been taken away. Um so our real issue, one of our real issues is um basically liability. Um I mean, you guys, it's great to to be able to put this park together and everything else, but you're gonna have people roaming all over the place, you're gonna have people parking everywhere. Um and if people are going to use Isaac Davis Way to to drive on or to walk on, um and they get hurt, not only is the town gonna be looked at, but they're gonna look at every one of the houses here on Isaac Davis Way as a deep pocket to get paid. Now, I I'm not, you know, inclined to increase my insurance coverage because you guys wanna put a dog park there. Um I shouldn't have to bring that burden on. Um and the other issue is is that uh the other woman had so eloquently said, safety. I mean, safety is a huge thing. That whole intersection failed miserably. Uh you know, during the the um when Walker had it, and it doesn't make any sense to bring back all of that commotion to that area. Um and she's absolutely right, in the morning and in the evening, you can't, and especially on weekends, you cannot go up and down Route Twenty-seven without being in a traffic jam. Um you know, if there's not enough parking there, people are gonna, they say they can park over at the fire station. That's great, but now they have to walk their dogs across Twenty-seven, which is a a logistic nightmare. They suggest, you know, Duncan Dawn's parking lot. That's even worse, cuz you're going over Route Two on the bridge. Um those are just two of the of the real concerns that we have. Um you know, with this whole Main Street project. Um I I think that, you know, the other locations, you know, yes, there are some costs to them, uh but I think that the costs will probably be as equal or less than what it would take for you guys to to do it on the Main Street property. You know, as far as is the farm is concerned, you're planning on taking those buildings down anyway, that would be a great time to do it. Um I mean, that's that's all I have to say. I mean, you've heard, you guys have heard from me a, you know, enough. Um if we go to a a town meeting situation uh or a a situation where we have to, you know, get up and give a presentation ourselves, so be it. But I respectfully ask that you guys take the Main Street property off of your agenda um for uh for the dog park. Strictly um from a liability situation where the the cost is just too high for us, uh we can't afford it.
Matt?
Yep.
And John Benson. Um are there any circumstances under which you and your neighbors would consider um uh having the dog park on the Main Street site?
So I I look, I don't I don't wanna sound like a, you know, a broken record. I don't wanna sound like, you know, I'm being, you know, mean to the town or anything else, cuz that's not our intention at all. But I don't see a way to circumvent the liability piece if, you know, somebody, God forbid, gets hurt. Um I could lose my home, you know, all all four of us here could lose our homes. Uh I'm sure the town has great insurance, so you know, they they would be covered and they could just pay whatever they need to pay. But we can't sustain that. And um so I I would have to respectfully say, there is really nothing that would work for us to have Main Street have the dog park there.
How would you s- how how would you foresee the liability exposure?
So what happens is, I already have an issue right now with Isaac Davis Way. We have a sign at the end of our road that says, private property, no trespassing.
You mean on on the Hayward side?
Correct, residents residents and guests only. And the reason why we had to put that there is because we are continuously getting cars to drive, speeding down Isaac Davis Way, and they pulled down all the way down into my driveway, all at the end of my road, back up on my lawn and turn around and go back out because there's a gate there. And when I come out and confront them, they're saying, well, the GPS told us to do this. So we've been to the GPS company a couple of times, and it's been rectified, but then it gets put back on it. This is a proper problem we've been having for, I don't know, ten years, fifteen years. Um and we still don't know how to actually rectify it. But the other issue is, you've got a lot of neighborhoods on the Hayward side. Now, if the dog park has a small parking lot, I imagine that people are gonna leash their dogs, and they're gonna walk down Isaac Davis Way, and they're gonna walk around the little gate that there's there's a small area where you can walk around the gate. They'll walk around the gate, and they'll go to the dog park, and then they'll walk back home again. Now.
You're using Isaac Isaac Davis Way?
Correct. Not not for anything, but you know, it is a private road, all right? And when we purchased our homes here, we purchased it knowing that it was a private road. It's not a public access. So the issue is going to be, you know, feces from other animals in our yards, um possibly trash, um you know, or even, you know, a- animals getting loose, eh eh who knows? But there's there's all kinds of issues with that. But that's that's, you know, part of the liability piece, because they will be on our property. And, you know, let's say somebody's backing up in their driveway and they don't see the person walking their dog down Isaac Davis Way, and they hit him. Now we have a problem. What if it's winter time and, you know, we plow the road ourselves, but it gets icy? So if somebody slips and falls and breaks their hip, okay? It's a reality, and the reality is, cuz the gate is open at that point, because we need to leave it open for the snowplows. But so the reality to that is, a broken hip on our property, some person doesn't have insurance, how are they gonna pay for that? They're gonna be looking to us because they did it on our property. Um you know, i- if people are gonna are looking for a shortcut to park, if the parking lot is full, they're gonna park on Isaac Davis Way, whether it be on our side of the gate or on the side of the gate that that uh, you know, heads towards Twenty-seven. Um but that's a problem, because, you know, it's not a it's not anybody else's property, it's our property. It's like me driving to one of your houses, parking on your driveway, and just and sitting there, you know, smoking a cigarette or whatever. Um you wouldn't appreciate that. So I I respectfully, again, you know, ask you guys to to look at this a little bit different way. I think we're we are the most impacted um out of all the sites that I've heard. We have the most uh to lose, um you know, with this moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh Ms. Norton asked to come back on if there unless there are other people.
There there are three other people ahead of her.
Okay.
Let's start her speaking again first.
Okay.
Um Tom Gillespie, please go ahead.
All right, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, great. Thank you again for all of your time this evening. Uh I wanted to say just a couple of words about the School Street site because uh we had actually done some very lightweight investigation into, in fact, the Weatherby Farm uh property that that's along Weatherby Road, the the plot, John, that I think you were first thinking about. That right now has a um an agreement with the state of Massachusetts where that municipal land off Weatherby, which is currently being farmed, there's an agreement in place that the town of Acton lets them do the farming, which they do. And in exchange for that, they gave us, they gave the town of Acton the right to use the School Street field. So there are some complexities there. Um I also believe that the current uh designation of the municipal property on Weatherby Road is in fact under a conservation restriction. And um in general, it seems like dog parks are considered active recreation, not passive. Plus, there's things like fences, et cetera. So we might be looking at uh having to accomplish a change in that designation, which uh will probably involve costs and legal fees and everything else. So just to give you a couple of pieces that I dug up on both of those properties. But I think it's good to have uh that for under consideration. I I very much, I'm not speaking for the committee cuz we haven't, you know, met, but, you know, I personally very much like this idea about whittling it down to a shortlist and then getting close together and heading towards a decision. Um I'd also like to uh, you know, uh turn my attention to Mr. Post's remarks. And while I understand them, I guess I don't understand them. And is there a lawyer that has concerned any of this? That that's it, thank you.
Daniella Plessa? You just have to unmute yourself to go ahead.
Can you hear me right now?
Yes.
Hello, hi. Um I I drive by that field almost every other day. And honestly, I haven't seen it used by kids or anyone else except people um flying drones uh probably ninety percent of the time. It's a pretty large area. It's flat from a design point of view. I think it's much easier to work with a flat terrain to make it into a useful, nice dog park by planting a couple of trees than do the amount of construction work that the other sites, Morrison Farm or or Main Street, which seems a nightmare location. I went to one of the um committee uh meetings when that proposal was um explained, and I was actually horrified by the traffic um situation that was put forth. Um so I'm just wondering whether one shouldn't consider a location that is the least interfering with other people. There are no neighbors anywhere close to to complain. It's not used for walking picnics, trails, um it doesn't have trails. So it literally is a place that I see empty all the time I drive by there. So it just occurred to me, why not try to do something there? Um do a little bit of landscaping um on a very accessible, flat terrain. Um it's it's just an opinion. I have no idea about the legal implications, who owns the place and so on. But as a resident who drives by there all the time, I just thought it's worth putting forth. Those are my my opinions, and I could expand more on issues about design and other things if you if you'd like me to. But at this point, I think just taking into account what kind of place would inconvenience fewer people and would require the least construction work should be should be priorities to my mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren Kordak? You just have to unmute yourself, please.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. Um just briefly, I have a question, and I apologize. I'm I'm just new to this process and this dialogue. I apologize if this is uh ground that has been gone over uh before. But I am just um having been a former resident of of Boston and familiar with Millennium Park there, which um was uh developed by capping a former landfill. I'm wondering if there are any former landfill areas um that could potentially be capped and turned into a park. And I also, um I believe that the W R Grace Superfund site straddled Acton and Concord, and I'm wondering if there's been any talk about like developing that into um into uh green space um as well. Um so that's a question, and then my comment um uh that I'd like to provide um is that my husband and two children and I, oh, we are neighbors of Morrison Farm, we live on Porchew Drive. Um I'm a an a delighted newer gardener at Morrison Farm. I have um major medical issues, and I can attest to the mental health benefits of sitting there amongst my uh vegetable plants and listening to the birds chirp and um and all of that. Uh we also are guardians of two dogs, where there are people, I like to say. Um and for all intents and purposes, uh for the four plus years that we've lived in Acton, Morrison Farm has already served as a park for our dogs. It's also, as far as I'm concerned, a human park and a turtle park and a bird park, et cetera. Um and I just um respectfully disagree with um it being characterized as a underutilized um uh you know, natural space. Uh I think it's actually heavily utilized, and um I would, you know, just be so, so sad um if it was if it was altered in any way, because for for my family, um it's like, and I I'm not overstating this, I hope, you know, it's like heaven on earth, it's like, especially during the pandemic. It's um the, you know, the place we go almost every single day, um you know, to um to thrive. Thank you.
And and uh John, Bettina Norton and Matt Post would each like to talk again, is that okay?
Please, of course.
Okay, Bettina Norton, please go ahead.
Good, thank you. Um I know I sounded a little bit disorganized before, but let me just say that we've owned our land here since nineteen forty-five, which I think a lot of you know, so we're very, very familiar with that area in North Acton. And I have to say that when the woman before me talked about landfill, that's exactly what you could use. You could use that area, you don't have to take down any trees, parking could come around to the side. It makes the recreation area a recreation area for all types. And as I indicated earlier, um there were um there are no neighbors, you're not going to have anybody objecting to anything. Uh you're not really going to have any neighbors objecting to anything. I'm the only neighbor, and I am not objecting. And I think that we desperately need a dog park, and I think that the poor Tom Gillespie in Mississauga are asking you to do it soon. And this is probably awfully late to throw this in, but I I was very disappointed that nobody asked me any question. And this is probably awfully late to throw this in, but I I was very disappointed that nobody asked me any questions. When I talked earlier about the site. Uh it is accessible. It is part of a large recreation area. There are trails where people now walk their dogs. It is so user friendly. It's right off the the trail, by the way, that wonderful Bruce, whatever it is trail. It's a perfect site. No trees removed, no problems with the butters, no safety issues. Why don't you consider it? Would you please ask me some questions about?
Yeah, um uh Ms. Norton, this this is John Benson. We we did do a a a. A walking tour uh of the uh of the um of DPW's site um last summer. And there were um uh Corey York made a very strong case. That he needed all of that land um for his operation. And we had a group of um of of Miracle Field parents with us. Who said their, you know, their children would just react very badly. They'd be sent off by barking dogs and were very moved by that.
Can I answer that? As I said, that's one time a week when the place is used versus seven days a week when the dog park would be used. Also, it is really not true that barking dogs in a site are a problem. And what does this woman do? When her children are out in public, where there are dogs on the public streets? Does she walk across the street? Does she not go on the street? It is not frankly, I mean, I don't mean to sound harsh about it, but it is not a good argument. And also, as I have indicated. I feel that uh if I was wrong about the size, two and a half ages, single space of Miracle Field, Work, Dog. People in Miracle Field who who there were only two people who refused me when I went through that petition. One was that woman and the other were some people who said they were new in town and they didn't wanna get involved. So that's not a good argument if you look at it. Secondly, much as as the town DPW knows and Dean, I think you know this. There's a lot of space back there. There's a lot of space. Could you walk the whole site? You could drive around there in big long circles. It is a big area. You feel free, put the dirt down by my property. I abut you on that side, on the on the northwest side. I don't care, put dirt there. I'd much rather see you do something sensible and something quickly. About these poor people who've been trying to get a dog park. This site has no, no restrictions at all on it at all. Except for moving some dirt around and there is plenty of space there. I'll be glad to, I'll know, but does anybody else have any comments? Joan?
Well, once the polling is over, I'd be happy to take your offer of a tour. Even until the weather gets cold.
Um Dean, do you have any comments in response to uh Ms. Norton? Particularly with regard to the U the the DPW site and and Corey York's. Uh case that he needed to retain all of that land.
You know, what's, what has happened is that Public Works has been squeezed and squeezed. They were moved. Uh originally, they had control and they were using large portions of what's now Narrow Park. They've been squeezed further up into the smaller site that they're in right now. There's huge quantities of materials in there that need to be placed somewhere. Uh and they need not only room for storage, but they need room for processing material. They need room for access for vehicles, very large vehicles that go in and out of there. Our very successful composting program run out of the landfill. All that material goes up there. Um and that's, again, needs heavy equipment, needs heavy trucks to access and move the material around. The area closes to Ms. Norton's property. Um we took a look at it and it does drop off into some wetlands areas back there. Um really, it's it's been squeezed. To the uh, you know, I I'm not gonna get involved in a dialogue with somebody about this, because I think we've gone out there, we've looked at it. The folks that have vested interest in continued proper operation of municipal. Functions for the town of Acton have decided this is the, this is probably the minimal site that they can use. And uh and my attitude on that is not going to change. And I, in fact, I expect there'll probably be an expansion of some of the uses there. Because of the uh the composting and a lot of the other green initiatives are going on. So I, it's, it's a nonstarter from my point of view to even consider a uh dog park in that op in that area.
No, Dean, I know and I'm very fond of you, but I knew you were going to be unhappy about that. But the fact is. That I would I will live up to, I would, Joan and anybody else who wants to come, I will take you on a tour of that place. And show how some of that material could be easily consolidated. The trucks that go in there have plenty of room to go around. I mean, I really mean it, Dean. It's it's, it's so silly. And that the dog park doesn't take that much space. It doesn't take that much. And you could put it in on the very, what, is it the northeast corner of that site? And you wouldn't have any objections from neighbors, you wouldn't have any objection from anybody except the BT DPW. So I'm happy to take anybody who wants to go through that. You're welcome to come here for coffee and we'll go down and walk through it. Set up a time, I'm here.
Thank you. Um uh David, who else?
There there there's still three people spoken before. Matt Post, please go ahead.
Yeah, this will be quick. I just wanted to clarify, uh the gentleman before had had asked if there was any validity to the statements that I had made. Um you as a board have the agreement uh that was written by two attorneys. Um stating that they have given up uh the rights to Isaac Davis have been given up, so that's one piece. Uh the second piece is, uh I have twenty years of ins- insurance and risk management experience. So when I tell you there's liability issues, I mean, I know it. So that's that's my background. Um so I just wanna clarify that for the gentleman, so he understands that he it's not, I'm just, I'm not just speaking. Thank you.
Claire Siska, please go ahead.
Uh I'll I'll be very brief. Um I I certainly don't wanna, I appreciate Bettina's enthusiasm and and support. And I don't wanna discourage any possibility. We were very excited about that site. Um the town manager. Had the town engineering department do a review and um. There's a document, I I can post it in the dog dog park section of the docu chair, but um that was what. Closed the door for us the uh on a cost analysis of what it would take to repurpose and move things around and whether. Um you know, it just, it seemed um not feasible financially for the town to use the DPW site.
Lauren Cordak, please go ahead. Lauren, you have to unmute yourself.
Hi, I apologize. Um I just um my follow one question of whether or not. Uh the W R Grace Superfund site um had been uh explored. Um I'm just not familiar with um. I'm not familiar with that site and where remediation stands um regarding that site.
Well, um ma'am, w- we don't own that property. That's owned by W R Grace.
Okay, um has W R Grace been uh approached um about this? Okay.
Daniela, please go ahead.
Hi, um I have heard a lot of objections about many of the places and I. Don't insist on considering any sites in particular. Um but I would really like to know that the Main Street site and the Morrison Farm site. Are not on your list anymore for all the reasons that so many people have explained. And I would really want to know and have someone. Uh provide us with a summary of what are your objections to at least considering the open space, which is quite large. At the school street. What are the objections? Who would object to that? And um I would, I would very much like to know that somebody will at least take into account. That proposal, do a cost analysis and so on. To my mind, from a design point of view. It's the easiest kind of space to convert into a dog park. You can do anything you want. In a completely open field. And people who want to take their dogs to a dog park don't need to go on trails. There there's plenty of conservation land where they could take their dogs on trails, including at Morrison Farm and so on. There's a certain purpose for a dog park, to socialize dogs who do not respond well to commands and so on. And allow them to to run off leash. So I don't think we should look for a place where humans could enjoy trails and nature and dogs could be contained. Uh behind fences. It's either one or the other. So you you really need to to think about your priorities. That's all I had to say. And um again, I do apologize because I know nothing about the administrative situation, who owns what. Um but it would be great to know that people are open to considering, even at this late time. Some some new ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Is 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 there anyone else, uh David?
The Bettina Norton would like to talk yet again.
Did you say me? No, I think I've I've said everything. I think that.
Oh, okay, great.
No, no, I've no, no, but I mean, the idea of dog walking around, a dog, I know the dog parks at Ale Life very well. I know the dogs parks in Be- on Beacon Hill where I live very well. I know the ones in the South End. And believe me, they are not havens for dog barking. And they are enclosed. And what I was suggested with the with the paths of walking is people have a choice. They can have the dog park. And they can have these other walks around where people are using them now. I'm just asking you please to at least give that another good look. And um again, we're willing to, if you all set up a time when you can come to walk you through and show you. How there can be consolidation to allow for how many acres are going to be involved in the dog park?
Generally, an acre.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, well, uh ba- 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 back to the board. Um John, how much time would it take you? To see whether the School Street site would be a um. A po- a a viable location for a park, dog park?
Well, uh just. Near lease on that property that ends.
I'm sorry.
Um my internet is not doing well, but I can I can look at it uh and. But I I understand it's a lease that we have with the state and it's up until twenty twenty four. And any uh new use of that site would have negotiated with the state and uh but I can do a full report. Um how long would it take? Um like a week or a couple?
Sure, so we could we could discuss it that again at our at our next matter meeting on the fourteenth?
Yes.
Is that doable?
Yes.
Okay.
And and we we, I think we also need uh, you know, the the dog park committee to look at that site and write an opinion. I think we can't choose that for them. I mean, we we can see if it's available.
Well, that's a threshold question, that's.
But al- also is access to water and other criteria that need to be there. So.
Okay, so i- i- in terms of proceeding. Um do you wanna put together a shortlist of sites? That we will be considering? And then schedule a meeting now for. Maybe say November second. Um when we can have a full discussion and take public input? Or would you perhaps just have one meeting just devoted to dog park?
Uh I I think we should just, we should vote part of our regular meeting, but I think we should do it in October sometime.
Or that would be, uh that meeting would be October nineteenth.
Then the dog park committee should have some input.
Well, sure. But you, I think the 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 direction we were going is, we would put. Put together several sites that are under consideration. And if we might agree on that tonight and set a date. So we have a direction and a and a process forward. Dean?
Yeah, just to move this forward. Um and I I expect, you know, I would want reports back from uh the town manager and the dog park committee. Any of their thoughts on any of these three potential options. But I think we're looking at three potential sites. Uh Morrison Farm, Main Street, or School Street. And uh let's put those on our shortlist. I think we pretty well whittle those things down. I think we know that there are pluses and minuses. All three of them. And I would suggest that for your meeting, for our meeting in October. That we just consider those three sites. And we accept input from dog park and committee and the town manager and then we'll. Set a time limit on how long the discussion shall be. And we'll accept some public input and then I think we need to make a decision.
Okay, Jim?
Um yeah, I'm very comfortable with that process. Uh I have a question. I wasn't on the board when y'all reviewed the Corey Road site and determined that it wasn't doable. So if if I'm the only one that's still curious about pursuing it, I'm happy to stand aside. Uh just wanted to, just just wanted to check to see if others were also curious about that.
Uh David?
I think the Corey Road site is doable. It means taking down a number of trees and probably fitting it in with the pump track. Um and so if people are comfortable with that, um you know, that could certainly go back on the list. Um but uh um you know, I I I think that that that's not a bad site either. It's in fact, you know, I would put, if that was on the list, but people will object to taking down the trees, right? Uh we we saw that earlier tonight. Uh uh but I would put that second actually after the Main Street site.
Um i- interestingly enough, I actually meant the uh the other, the other site on the other side of Corey Road, the one uh beyond.
You mean the DPW site?
DPW site, yeah, yeah.
Oh, to me, to me, that one is completely not workable. Okay, I I understand it, Ms. Norton's opinion, but I've been there multiple times. And uh you know, it it comes down to the, you know, um just there are a jazzy in considerations for DPW. One of them is when we get a huge storm, where do they put this stuff?
Well, there's also the Kennedy. Issue.
The Kennedy cut through, yes. Yeah, I I understand that too. I don't know what the resolution is there. But I I know that that easement or right of way or whatever exists. Um uh but you know, the 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 DPW site to me is, uh you know, I completely agree with Dean that they've already been squeezed and. You know, they they have the material sorted. I mean, yes, the materials could be, could take less space, but then they wouldn't be sorted, right? And um a- and then um uh uh you know, like I said, you get a storm when you lose a hundred. Trees across roads and round town or pieces of telebump hall or whatever. And they they have to clear the streets and where do they put the stuff until they can process it? You know, we need a place.
Dean?
Yeah, I uh I was gonna uh make mention, I I think I agree with David about the uh, you know. If we wanna include a fourth site for our shortlist. Um the site across from the uh entrance into the uh Narrow Park Pavilion. Um butting up against um Ian Pete's operation. I think we could probably consider that as as a fourth site. Um you know, it. Obviously, there's gonna be some some difficulties with it as far as some grade issues and some trees. But it does have the benefit of having a a really nice parking lot directly across a minimally used road. So that's certainly solved it. So I would certainly expand the list to include that as a fourth.
Oh, uh David?
So yeah, if if that wants to be A, B, C, or D, you know, I I think, you know, that that people will evaluate the pros and cons in our hearing. As to which they prefer, right? So there there are, like all the other sites, there are pros and cons. Um uh you know, that that one has the, you know, in addition to other things, has the advantage of being close to other recreation. So um you know, I I think that's that that's good. So um you know, I I think that's that that's good.
O- o- okay, um given it's it's nine thirty, um w- w- may we? Sort of uh adopt this uh to uh to to have a short list of four sites, Quarry Road, Morrison Farm. Main Street and School Street. Um and put it on our agenda for um Monday, October nineteenth. And um what information would the board like ahead of that meeting? Any specific, David?
Uh mo- mo- mostly the recommendations uh from the the dog park committee. And uh and secondarily, well, for the school speak site, wh- whether there is the legal possibility of putting a permanent. Park on that or, you know, instead of a four-year lease, we get a ninety-nine-year lease or a fifty-year lease or something.
Well, well, J- J- John said he could report back on on those issues at our meeting on September fourteen.
Perfect, perfect.
Okay, so can we? We're all comfortable with that approach forward then?
I am.
Jim?
Yes.
Joan? All right. Thank you. Thank you all. Um. So our. Uh next issue was uh discuss COVID nineteen emergency rental assistance program and consider next steps. Uh John?
Thank you. It's a program called the Emergency Rental Assistance Program uh as a response to COVID nineteen pandemic. This is a program that was uh funded through the use of CARES Act, uh CARES Act money. Uh that was approved by the state as an appro- appropriate use. The R H S O, our Regional Housing Services Office, has been administering the program for us with the help of Laura Ducharme. Our Community Resource Coordinator. The board approved the use of fifty thousand dollars. Uh to date, we've used just under forty thousand of that. Uh to help approximately twenty households. And uh given the extent extended um needs of. Uh people that are both in the program and people that have yet to uh bet find the program and be accepted into the program. Uh we are requesting the board to consider uh approving the additional use of up to fifty thousand dollars more. Of CARES Act's fu- CARES Act funding. And what that would do, it would provide. Uh additional rental assistance to the twenty households in the program now up until December thirty first. Uh which, as we know, is the extent for which CARES Act funds may be used. You can't spend it. Before March or after December, so this would be in line with that uh guidance. And it would allow for the twenty households to uh have assistance through the end of the year and also allow for. Fifteen to twenty new recipients if we're able to find them and they're able to uh meet the program requirements, so. Uh we certainly could uh use the remaining eleven thousand dollars to. Find a uh approximately ten new families to help. But if uh the board is interested in uh doing the additional fifty, we could help uh many more people. So I just wanted to bring it to to your attention. Uh the. The timing works well because I think September is, I think most of the families had assistance through September. So if we were gonna help them again, it'd be good to have it in place uh earlier, earlier than September end so they know.
Okay, th- there was a specific motion that Laura Ducharme prepared that was in our packet. Um that read move that the uh Board of Selectment approve an additional fifty thousand dollar allocation from CARES funds. Um to extend the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, ERAP. Grants for the nineteen current recipients and provide funding for fifteen to twenty new applicants. Through December thirty-one, twenty twenty. Um would there be a second to that motion and then we can have discussion?
Second.
Second. Okay, a discussion? Okay, being no further discussion, um then uh David, would you call the roll, please?
Uh Mrs. Snyder Grant?
Hi.
Uh Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And I also say aye unanimously.
Okay, then item seven would be board to approve. Fee structure and parking restrictions for electric charging stations. John, please?
So as uh as the board knows, we had a charging station installed at the beginning of this calendar year right behind Town Hall. And we worked out a a fee structure that we thought would cover the cost of the electricity needed to provide. Uh that service and amenity to our uh residents. And the basic structure today that's in place is that users can go up to it, plug in, and the first four forty-five minutes is free. And then after that, they're charged um a per minute rate. Uh of over something over a dollar. Uh and what's what's happening is we're we're getting a lot of people that are going there for forty-four minutes. Uh or um are are going there and it's, we're not covering it the way we uh wanted to, so we. I'm back. So when we presented the information a few months ago, we said we were gonna keep an eye on it. And uh come back to you if we need to make adjustments, and that's why we're here. So uh we could do is change it so that the first fifteen minutes are free instead of the first forty-five minutes. And then thereafter, charge a dollar fifty per hour, which I don't know what that works out to per minute, um but a dollar fifty per hour. Um and what's in what's interesting about this is that. You know, over the few months that we've been doing it, we track not only the energy use, but there's also fees that we have to pay to the. Charge point company, the people that run the whole program for us. It's very easy for our users that it's it's an app and. Uh it's really a good product, but there's a fee associated with it, so. We have a better understanding what that fee looks like now as well, um and we have a new uh installation of these. Equipment at the very rear of the parking lot, which hopefully will get a lot of action uh with once we open Town Hall back up again and. People start noticing it. Uh so we're comfortable with this recommendation now and we will commit to continuing to. Uh monitor it uh going forward with with the goal that we're not uh generating a profit here. We just wanna make sure we cover our costs. Uh so if if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, we recommend that you uh changed the. Fee structure as outlined in the packet.
Um do you do you have that uh the amendment to the existing traffic uh rules and orders? Could you put that up on the screen? Because that's.
Yeah, I'm not, something's wrong with my internet. I don't I I don't know that I could do that.
Um do all of you have? Um. Um tha- that um that that piece of the packet? It's a town of acting Board of Selectment Amendment to Existing Traffic Rules and Orders. And it begins voted at the traffic rules and orders. That's it, yeah.
I would make a motion to approve this change.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Um any further dis- any dis- further discussion? David?
So I did the I did the math on these earlier. This seemed very fair, the charging rates at at thirty amps. I think this is. Very fair along the lines you play pay other places, so this is good in my opinion.
Um any further comments or questions? Okay, being none, if uh David would uh call the roll, please?
Uh Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And I also say aye, so that's unanimous.
Okay. So then um the next item would be item eight, board to approve updated fee schedule for the transfer station. That was also in the packet. Um if we might, that's that's multiple pages. Um uh John?
So uh annually, uh Corey does a nice job of tracking expenses and revenue. Who's at the transfer station for. Uh oh. For all different revenues, expenses that we have at the transfer station, and he he does analysis every year. And based on the analysis, this year, he's making a mi- uh recommendations that we make some minor modifications to the fee schedule. Uh most programs will remain the same, but the prices for the bags, uh we're recommending an increase. So since this is a fee, uh this needs to go before the board for your consideration and Corey, I believe, is here if there are any questions.
Corey? Corey, do you have any uh comments?
Oh, he may not be allowed to speak. Hold on a second. Corey, you can unmute yourself if you wanna say something.
Hi, how you doing? Um hi. Yeah, just following up, John said we we go through analysis each year, what the system um brings in for revenue and expenses, so. Um we break up the budget between um costs to handle and dispose of the trash versus. Cost of running the program, so. Um at looking at the cost just to run the operation itself for the vehicle stickers. And including the revenue that gets collected with stickers and um recycling, things like that. That seems uh um adequate to stay um the vehicle stickers to stay with no change. When we look at the cost of the handling the trash and um and that. It that we're due to just do a slight increase, so it covers that cost.
Okay, move to approve.
Th- th- this would be the move to approve the transfer station and recycling facility uh smart pay fee um. Recommendations dated August third, twenty twenty. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Jim?
Uh a few questions, um. So so Corey, it sounds like we are still having the the general doctrine that fixed costs are being paid for by the stickers. And the variable cost of trash disposal is paid for by the bag cost. Is that still true?
Yeah, what we do is the bag costs, um so if you were to bring a bag of trash and dump it on the floor. The the cost of that bag handles all the handling and disposal of that what's in that bag.
Got it. Um so one of the mysteries, as I recall, when we were first trying to figure out this program, was um. Uh what, you know, if you have a thirty-three gallon bag, so-called, how many pounds, because that's how we pay for the trash removal? Does it does it hold on average? And do we now know, do we now have uh any information about the um? The the average actual used capacity of each of these bags?
Yeah, I think as we go through the analysis, one thing we. Um we track the distribution of the bags itself. So we know how many bags are being put out there and we know how much trash is being um. Put out, so we're able to track that. I'm just looking at what I have. Generally, what I was finding was the. I'm just not seeing it right here, but um I do have some analysis that talks about. The amount of tonnage, looking at the bags, um just averaging it out. That's kind of how we backed in. We knew, we know we sell about, I think it's about four point one million gallons of bags in a year. We know we're. That we know it's um disposing, I think it's about twenty-one hundred. Uh tons of trash and anything, so just breaking that out. Um of how much sort of how much per gallon and then applying that to the size of the bag is sort of. The general math of what we were looking at.
Okay, um I I can see that I have many questions, but they're not really related to whether I would approve this or not, so. Um uh perhaps with John's permission, I could just talk to you another time and like maybe get more of the complete spreadsheet to understand it more deeply.
Sure.
Thanks.
Sure. Okay, um if there's no further comments or questions, uh then uh David, proceed with the the calling the roll.
Uh Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And I also say aye, so that's unanimous.
Okay, so this uh the next item is number nine, review project concepts for application to Mast dot. Shared street grants.
Thank you. As as part of uh COVID nineteen responses, Governor Baker announced a grant program. Uh operated through Mass DOT to help communities uh do. Quick, short-term improvements to their street ca- streetscapes to help with. Uh the business businesses and pedestrian safety and several other things to help. With our community needs. And uh we've been working with the Barr Foundation and the Solomon Foundation. Uh to help fund a lot of design work, create preliminary design work. And gearing it towards what we believe to be uh applic- an application to this program that will be competitive. There are several things that we know we wanna do that uh we we understand would be competitive. Example of that would be sidewalk construction. They're not interested in sidewalk construction necessarily. They wanna have. Uh shorter term, easier to uh complete items. So Corey has been working with. The partners I mentioned earlier, and we would like to pursue a grant application soon. It's a rolling application process. They've already announced several grants uh within the last few weeks and we'd like to get in the next announcement round if if we're successful, so. We wanted to make sure the board is comfortable with what we're looking at before we go any further. Corey has a couple slides, I think, that we can show you and he can talk through some of the design concepts of. And uh Corey, can you share your screen or do you need someone else to do that?
I think he has to be promoted to panelist.
If you mind, uh thank you.
So now now Corey, you can unmute and present in every panel.
So we have um. Yeah, we're working on, I don't know if you can see that now. We're working on a um. A shared street space grants program. We're in sort of draft form of putting that together, so we have. We've been able to get a technical assistant grant through the Solomon and Barr Foundation to help us. Um bring on a a a Mast dot prequel consultant that's kind of um. Understands this program pretty well and the intent and what would make it through. Like John said, that what they're really looking for, a quick build, um in order we get this grant in now, which I think it's the grant. Runs through September, but they want it substantially complete by October ninth, so doesn't give a lot of time to um. Do a lot of the things we want, but um the sort of the three. Projects that have kind of risen to the top that we're fine tuning right now would be uh Central Street. We did a um sort of a a technical review of trying to put a bicycle accommodations on Central Street. Sort of utilizing what we have now without um doing a full reconstruction of mine day. So we've looked at different approaches, um and the the one that we're looking at right now to implement would be um. It's a combination of shared lanes and uh bike lanes, so what they would do is these. Certain stretches with the climbing lanes or what have you. Um we would, this space and some of these sections where we can have a an isolated bike lane in one approach. And then um as you get to another section where it may be uh needed on the other side of the road, it it kind of transitions, so. We're looking to have um sort of re-strike Central Street in order to allow us to. Um sort of try this out and have bike lanes, um marking signs, kind of bring away interest to people. I I know I see quite a few um bicyclists on a normal weekday. Going to and from the train station in amongst just um other travels, whether it's recreation or going out for shopping, things like that, so. Um it'd be something to sort of fill in from Main Street out to um Elm Street, kind of filling in that stretch there. Um another location that we were looking at was sort of in the um Martin's Martin Maple Stow Street area. Um we're looking at doing some um temporary narrowing of the five-way intersection. Sort of backstop of Jones Field, the that Martin Maple Stow and um Liberty Street. Kind of narrowing up, trying to get cars to slow down a little, um and. Uh but leaving room for turning movements for larger vehicles, things like that, so kind of a test case there. Um we did look into multi-way stop under this program, but it's it. That's a more involved process and doesn't meet the the timelines or the sort of the goal of this program. Um and then a- as another. Um, and then a- as another piece of that, the Stowe Street between that intersection and Maple Street. Putting in some temporary, the um, should temporary bike pedestrian lanes so that, but it's. It's kind of narrowing the vehicle lane, so it's, even though there's bike lanes, they're dashed, so it's kind of shared, so it. Causes cars to have to slow down because they have much more limited space. Um, so it's kind of a concept that the uh, Mast dot program is putting towards. Look, give it a shot, see how bike lanes would work, but also try to attempt to slow cars down coming through here, so it'd be a matter of pavement markings and signage. And then sort of the last component at the train station is getting some additional bike lockers. Um, we're looking to right now temporary position them on Gordon Richards. We have an area. That's crosshatched down by the wetlands, um, mostly for, due to store- storage and issues like that in the winter, so. We will look to put some uh, possible bike lockers there uh, through through the fall and then. We probably have to remove those, so it would be a temporary rental, but. The good thing with this is, with this program is we get the grant money, we can acquire these and they're, we own it at the end, so. We can have these bike lockers and then try to find a more permanent place as we go through the feasibility of Gordon Richards um, in the area all around, so. We find a more permanent location, we can always relocate that over there, so we've been working with our um. A lot of our contractors and vendors trying to get these things all lined up, so if we can get the go-ahead from the state. In the coming weeks, we can get this ordered and delivered within that, within the month of September, so we can have that all in place by early October.
Hey, Jim?
Yeah, Corey, uh, last year we walked Strawberry Hill Road with Paul. And I thought we were gonna put a center line down that to help with the traffic.
Yeah, we did a um, a road safety audit at Strawberry Hill and Hayward Road, came out with a number of recommendations. Um, and one thing we have to come back to the board in regards Strawberry Hills, the uh. Parking sort of up in the front portion by Great Road, um, I, we started to talk about a center line and some. Electronic speed signs out there, um, I started to get a lot of um, response back from neighbors that weren't happy about. Pavement markings, but um, that was, that is something that came out of that study that we're looking into, so.
Further questions for Corey? Comments?
Sure.
Jim?
Um, so Corey, I I'm oddly can't remember if Central Street has a a painted center line.
Central Street does have a center line right now, uh, this will, this will require some shifting of it, so we would have to eradicate that. And then put in the striping.
Okay, the um, uh, the the reason I mention that is because the last time I talked with M A P C about um, bike safety. They were talking about um, uh, eliminating center lines, uh, if there's bike lanes, because uh. Without the, without the center line, cars will naturally accommodate um, bike, bikes and bike lanes. Well, with the center line, they tend to um, you know, use, they tend to think of the bike lane as like, that's, that's mine, I can use it. Uh, whereas without a center line, it will tend to, you know, drift as needed uh, to to make room. And I wonder if that was a concept that had been part of your discussions as well.
It's a concept that's being discussed on Stowe Street with the lower volume, but not on Central with the higher volume, so. I can't do it specifically discussed for Central, but uh, yeah.
Okay, great, thanks. Oh, and one, one last question, um. I I I was wondering about the the current use of 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 lockers versus racks. At the train station, um, I have, we've been under the impression that when, as new bicycle racks are placed, they get filled up immediately. Because there's such a pent-up demand for them, but that sometimes the lockers have been going um, unrented, but maybe that, I'm sure I have old information, so I was wondering. How that's looking these days.
Yeah, we get, um, when I'm down the commute a lot, sort of a normal commuting timeframe, um. The bike racks on the Maple Street side, being the inbound, um, are overwhelmed with bikes there. Um, if you go on the Central Street side, um, not so much, there's usually spaces available on the racks. Um, by the lockers on the sort of the side of the train station. Um, I do see, we put in some new racks down the other end with a roof on top and I. I do see a tendency of people to park there more, I think more of this implement weather coming, so.
Right, it just seemed like racks were cheaper than lockers and took up less space, so if they were, if they were preferred and well-used. Um, why not invest in more of those than in these expensive lockers that take a lot of.
Um, further questions for Corey? Comments? Okay, John, did, um, what action did you want us to take here? Just hear Corey out?
Yeah, so these are temporary um, improvements or, you know, um, improvements that can be undone. I guess is the way to describe it, and so we wanted to just make sure that the board is comfortable with these concepts. Uh, so that we can submit uh, based on these and if we're successful, we will uh, put them in place and see how they work out and. I think the idea is that they would lead to either a permanent change in in the streetscape or or a further modification based on what we learned. Uh, in this, uh, once we make the changes.
Move to support the application.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? So David, then uh, call the roll.
Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
I also say aye, so it's unanimous.
Okay, thank you, Corey and John. Okay, and then review and approve concept for Mast Works grant program application. John?
This is another, uh, it would be helpful to have Corey share or keep, uh, show the slide, uh, Corey, the. Of the application, the first one. So basically, we applied for the Mast Works grant program last year. We put in a very competitive application. Uh, it was, we got attention from uh, the the undersecretary uh, of D H C B. Or, and uh, we we thought it went really well. We got some feedback at the end that one of the main concerns. With our application was timing, the project wasn't far enough along, hadn't been approved yet, um, several other factors like that. Uh, so this year, uh, the application for Mast Works is due Friday of this week. And we've been working to revise that application from last year, uh, to update it to sort of where we are now with the project. Uh, last year, the focus was on um, making the sewer connection. Uh, in- investing in the sewer connection, uh, since that time, developer has agreed to fund that sewer connection, so. There are some, uh, some of that work has already been covered, but there are still some work at the treatment plant to support that. Uh, extension that we were asking the state to consider funding as part of this program and another big component that we're looking at this year. Is while we have the roads all torn up for the sewer uh, work, we wanna make sure that we can implement some complete streets. Uh, best practices in how we reconstruct them, uh, when the project is over. And so that's why we're asking for, uh, we're gonna put in an application for two point five million. If you recall, the application last year was uh, much higher and in addition to be having the project already been approved by the Board of Appeals. Um, and they have an updated construction schedule, uh, we think the lower amount. And the more focused on specifics will will help this application be even more competitive this year. And if for some reason it isn't, uh, it also reminds them that we're interested and we wanna work with the Mast Works program. And if they say no to us again, that'll be at least four times and it'll give us, it'll put us in even better position next year. Uh, so it's it's strategic and it's also something we hope we'll we'll get. Um, Corey, are there any specifics of the application that we should highlight here? Or, um. I think it's just generally, you know, as I mentioned, that whole stretch of road. Uh, where there'll be new sewer lines installed, we wanna, we wanna re-envision with some complete streaks concepts. Uh, that we are still developing, um, and we would develop further if we were successful.
Jim?
Yeah, move to approve the twenty twenty Mast Works infrastructure program action grant application.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Then David, if you please, call the roll.
Uh, Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And I also say aye, so that's unanimous.
Okay, so item eleven, approve proclamation commemorating the one-hundredth anniversary of women's suffrage, Dean?
Okay, um. I know if anybody can, I don't have this on my screen, so I can't share it, but I can.
I can give it to Jared, can we just a second?
Perfect. So. This is sort of an interesting collaboration. The uh, the impetus behind uh, this proclamation actually originated. With the Acton Republican Town Committee. And I took their idea and I brought it to the League of Women Voters, who drafted most of this motion, uh, most of the proclamation. And then I did a few minor tweaks and uh, presented for your consideration. I think it's. Certainly, the uh, one-hundredth anniversary of women's suffrage is certainly very significant and along. Coincidentally, is also the one-hundredth anniversary of League Women Voters, so I think it's.
Oh, having been part of both, I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discuss, any for, any discussion? Okay, uh, David, would you uh, please call the roll?
Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Yeah, I also say aye, so that's unanimous.
Thank you very much, Dean.
Okay, now, um, sitting as sewer commissioners.
Um, point of order, John?
Yeah.
I was wondering if we wanted to consider the consent items before we switch into sewer commissioners?
Well, on the consent items, there there will be a a hold on, um.
Okay, so we'll switch back to being board of selected, so we'll switch into being sewer commissioners and then switch.
Yeah, just follow the agenda, yeah.
Alright, fine.
Okay, so um, consider a sewer privilege fee request from John Perkins for nine school street. Um. John?
This is a request that uh, came in and it's outlined in. The packet for exactly what he's looking for. I'm trying to uh.
I got it, I got it, hold on, one second, there you go. A- actually, I I can speak to this if you'd like.
Uh, please.
So ba- basically, there's some math in the first two paragraphs as to what the sewer betterment should be. And that's this number here in the end, um, and you can review the math and we can go through the math if you wanna uh, talk about it. The the, if I'm understanding correctly and uh, John can correct me if I'm wrong, thi- this last paragraph. Ah, it's just sucking the whole thing for me. Anyway, the the last paragraph is the one that's uh, his request. Basically, he's asking. To pay this fee with interest at the time of occupancy rather than the time, rather than at the time of building permit.
So he's asking for a def- a referral on what he pays?
Yes, correct, but he, it would, it would include interest. We've done this for other developers before. It doesn't change the amount of money we get. Um, it just defers it and we get that original amount, which is in this case eighty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. Um, uh, later with interest.
Okay, and and I, and I see here the engineering department, we don't foresee any issue with approving this request.
Yes, so am I describing it correctly, John Manjari?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Okay, is, is there a second, Dean?
Second.
Dean, any further discussion? And uh, David, if you kindly call the roll, please.
Okay, uh, Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And I also say aye, so that passes unanimously.
Okay, um, so our last item, the the consent items. Thirteen, approved meeting minutes July twenty and August ten, twenty twenty. Fourteen, appoint Thomas Doolittle as a full member of the Design Review Board Board, term to expire June thirty, twenty twenty-three. Fifteen, appoint Mel Lima as associate member of the Land Stewardship Committee. Term to expire June thirty, twenty twenty-one. Sixteen, appoint Charmaine Williams, Don Wang, Makina, Mu- Windy. Nasra, um, um, Menji, Nathan Cookson and Sandra Heinz as full members of the Diversity. Equity and Inclusivity Commission, term to expire June thirty, twenty twenty-one. Uh, is there a hold on that?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's talk about it.
Um, seventeen, um, accept gift Acton Police Department of four hundred and twenty-five dollars from loyal companions toward. Who would supplies or services um, for um, um, Acton Service Dog. Eighteen, um, accept uh, gift Acton Police Department veterinary services from Great Road. Uh, Veterinary Hospital for Acton, uh, Acton Service Dog. Nineteen, accept gift Recreation Department for twenty-five dollars for Eric and Melissa. Uh, Charich, uh, to be used for low-income families in need of childcare at Narra Camp. Um, uh, twenty, accept um, uh, gift uh, from the Recreation Department. For thirty-four hundred and ninety dollars for multiple donors to be used for low-income families in need of childcare at Narra Camp. So may I have a motion to approve consent items thirteen through fifteen. And seventeen through twenty.
So.
Thank you, is there a uh, uh, second?
Second.
Um, then uh, David, if you'd call the roll, please.
Uh, Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And I also say aye, so that's unanimous.
Okay, so with respect to consent item sixteen on the um, um, D E I C. We had, um, is, we got, we had gotten an email from Fran, our our slot. Is Fran still here?
She is.
Yeah, okay, Fran?
Hold on, let me give her a second. Okay. Go ahead, Fran.
It's so late, I won't keep you long.
No, no, take your time on this.
I wa- I was just uh, wanting to, uh, first of all, I want to say how happy I am that this committee is being formed. And also with uh, John Manjari's achieving a grant for racial equity, which I think is very cool. Um, my reason tonight for for, I was just asking that the window that folks can submit a letter. You know, continue on to the Sep- the September seventeenth deadline. And I know that I I have no objection to the folks who are, who you have listed tonight, um, I just think. It makes more sense to have people submit letters within a whole window of time. You might have. Other, you know, committed potential commission members that are equally qualified, so. That, that's really what I'm asking.
Um, David, please.
So there are already twice as many people as there are slots on the committee, uh, you know, I I won't have any problem finding. A a quite competent committee, uh, a commission with the applicants that are um, already there. This, uh, these names account for about half the uh, commission and so there are still slots open for the other half. Um, with those, um, I'm actively, um, yeah, I'm talking with people, interviewing people. And um, uh, you know, there, uh. Uh, you know, I I I don't, I don't think there'll be spots open by that, the seventeen. Al- al- also, um. Uh, I would like to see the us be able to appoint everybody by our next meeting on the fourteenth. So that we can start arranging meetings in the commission, um, uh, the uh, the, the. If we don't uh, appoint everybody until the list, I mean, so to the, the um. I mean, so to the the um, the meeting after the seventeenth, then, you know, the the. Uh commission won't start until October, whereas like it'd be easy to start it in September, waiting's hard enough.
I mean, in all fairness, I think just folks may be trickling, those people who come back from vacation. I I just think since a date was set, I think it's it's fair.
Was 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 the seventeenth for the close of applications, David, or was that when we expected to? Um announce the full committee?
Uh, it it was, um, it may be a little bit ambiguous. The posting that we did said. Um, uh the absolute deadline was the seventeenth, but to get your uh request in, the sooner the better. It literally said the sooner the better, uh because uh there's just a huge number, you know, even by the time we posted. I had enough to 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 people to fill the committee. So, um, uh, you know, I I I don't see the point in in waiting. Um and you know, to to, you know, the the fact that I have this, this, uh, you know, we did this on the on the thirteenth, I think. Um, and so it'll be over a month that I have to contact people, interview people, that kind of thing. If I have to wait until the end. Um, you know, the batch process, we're gonna be well into October. Um, so, uh, I would propose that we just. Um. I mean, it's not like we're lacking for applicants.
Which is great. Um, I I think I've said what I came to say, so.
Okay, uh Dean?
Yeah, I uh. I support David, um, he volunteered to take this on, and if that's the way he thinks he should set up his committee, why, I'll support him on it.
Okay, a- a- and Jim?
Um. So I'm, I I also appreciate David's uh work that he's done on all this. And I would also like to find a way to accommodate some of these concerns about the deadlines. And I'm wondering if there's um some intermediate ground here. One might be to announce now an actual final deadline. Um, that would be in some, you know, small number of days, enough so that people can, you know, get off their butts and and finish writing their applications and send them in. Um, the other, um, the other question I had for you, David, was, or for the committee. Uh when we um negotiated uh how this process would work, we envisioned that. Um, all the applications would be available, at least for the board to look at. Um, I I imagine that makes them a matter of public record, but it wouldn't necessarily mean that we put them all on DocuShare. Just means we would all have a view of it and other people could um ask for them as well. Um, and one of the things about waiting for a few more days, uh is that um at our next meeting on the fourteenth, if we did a final decision. We could have, you know, the complete uh set of of applications. Uh and your, this the set that you would recommend from that, uh and that m- might be um a good thing for us to have.
Well, I I have no problem, if I I can share all the applicants with with the board, um that that's fine. Um, uh and I I can, I can work with Lisa to do that. I I as as the applications have come in. I have forwarded them to to Lisa. Uh I have some hesitancy to put everybody into the uh into DocuShare. Um, uh, you know, that, um, so. Um, yeah, we 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 can, uh you know, I I you you suggested several things there, I'm not sure. You know, you suggested setting setting a deadline, uh letting you guys see that, um, uh all the applications. I I have. No problem with either of those things if we wanna set a deadline sooner. I I I would love to. Um, the, you know, to be, to go move forward today with half the committee and do the other half of the of the commission on the fourteenth of September. Um, so, uh, that that would be my preference.
I'd like to see the applications too.
Okay, I will, we 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 can, we can forward those to the board.
Okay, so let's do that, that would satisfy. Membership. Um, so we're we're comfortable then going forward with approving um the um six uh. Uh mem- uh members David is putting forward this evening then?
We haven't seen the applications.
You you've seen them for these, these six?
Yes.
We haven't seen the others.
Yes. Ri- ri- right, so, um, you know, if, uh, uh, uh. You 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 guys wanna see all of them before we make a decision?
I think that would be in the spirit of what we had agreed to before.
Again, again, we don't do that for any other committee.
Well, well, no, you know, you know, you know, Da- David, in 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 fairness with with any other committees. Um, the standing committees, the the fifty standing committees. Um, when you come on the um s- uh the Select Board as a new member and you're assigned the liaisonship. Um, the the committees are s- are are pretty much staffed. Um, you know, our job, you know, we're told in the spring, just to, you know, go to the committees and find out. Whose term is up, go to the chair, do you wanna continue, these people wanna continue for another term? And they get reappointed. When it, when a, an opening occurs, it's generally through the VCC that they do the inter- interviewing process. And they'll go to the liaison for the committee and say, this is a person, um, you know, we recommend. Or are we, this is a person of interest for you to consider, and then if you don't know the person, you would speak to the person to find out their interest level. And then, or if you know the person, you would just call Lisa and put her on, put the person on the consent agenda. It it's not like this process at all.
So, uh, but but uh John, this is the uh the process that you use for the town meeting improvements commission. We didn't see everybody you considered.
No, well, tha- 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 that was, um, tha- that was a somewhat different process, but what I did for that committee. Um, was I went and uh looked at categories of people to put on the committee. Um, two people from the League of Women Voters, one person from the uh Disabilities Commission. One person from the Council of Aging, then two longtime members, uh who, you know, people who. Regular attendees at town meeting over a period of years, and then three people who had lived in the community. Um, and generally, I went to the various groups, I said, who would you put on this, who, you know, who would you put on this group? It wasn't.
So, so, I I I did the same process that you're you did, except I reached out to people differently. I'm really not comfortable with the process of having a group evaluation of all the applicants. Uh, um.
I I don't thi- I don't think they're asking for a group evaluation, I think they're just saying, you know, just give us the names of the app, of the, you know. There will be, th- this committee was, um, you know. On on a, on a, I think a considerably higher level than the town meetings improvement committee. And many more people were interested in this committee than in that committee. I think all Joan and others are asking for is, just send us the app, uh you know, you know, the the applicants that you picked. It was your job to 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 pitch the members subject to our final approval.
Sure, I I I I've already said I'm happy to ha- to send them all. But I would still like to move forward with these today. So.
Wait, wait, Joan, would you like to approve them all at once?
Yeah, y- yeah, I would like to approve them, well, I would like to approve these today. A- a- again, you know, you guys are imposing a level of scrutiny on this committee that is not appro- on any other committee.
Well, this is a real important committee, and we've gotta get it right.
Uh, I, you know, I I I understand that, and I and I'm tasked with the responsibility of making it a success.
Well, then you should be willing to share with all of us.
I I already said, Joan, I will send you the complete list.
Um, Jim?
Um, I'm hearing the conflict back and forth, I I'm, I'm not sure how to intervene to resolve it. Um, I'd I'd rather have, uh, you know, a fixed, a fixed date. Uh and then approve the whole committee all at once. Um, I agree, this is, this is an unprecedented thing. We're 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 going into territory that we have not been in before. Um, so I'm fine with it being a little awkward on the way in, um, and I'd like to err on the side of uh of of openness. Um, and, um, so that we all feel, um. You know, engaged in the i- 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 committed and involved in the in the work of the committee. And I think one way to do that is to uh have the board, um, you know, just know the complete universe. Of choices, um, and then, you know, uh, respect your your choice about what to do, unless we have some very serious concerns. Which, you know, I doubt we'll have, but it's uh, because it's so unprecedented, uh, I'd I'd like us to have that option.
Uh Dean?
Find myself in the strange position of agreeing with Joan Gardner and Jim Snyder Grant simultaneously.
It's gotta happen someday, Dean.
I uh, I think probably, you know, I understand, David, your concerns about this, but I think. You know, my expectation was that, you know, we were gonna approve all of these at once, and that they'd have, you know. We kinda had a set time, and we figured everybody would have, you know, a month, month and a half to uh submit the application, so. I think probably we should stick with, with what I think was the understanding by at least probably the majority of the committee. Um. Let's see all of them and we'll approve them all on the fourteenth, you know, unless we see something really weird.
David, are you okay?
No. Yeah, I I I think you guys, we don't do this for anything else, right, and uh, um.
But this isn't anything else.
You know, you know, it it involves a lot of, um. Reaching out to people on my part, you know, kind of negotiating with them, you know, encouraging them in some cases to be a member. You know, um, uh, you know, ba- ba- balancing the the various. Uh g- groups of people depending on who's already said yes, um, and, um. You know, I I I think you guys are putting me in a, in a very, in a very awkward position, and I don't know. Um, you know, I I'm perfectly happy sharing everything, you know, I have no problem. But you you they, what I'm hearing back is you guys wanna make the judgment based on everybody you see. Cause otherwise, you'd approve this today, and I I could send you the list after. Um, uh, but you're not, you're not saying that, and so, um, uh. Uh, I I I think this is not good.
Well, I I think there was an expectation that we would see. You know, your 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 full recommended committee, um, all at one time. Um, and that would have been closer to the, um, you know, the the September fourteenth, September seventeenth. Um, you know, timeframe, you know, not, you know, in in piecemeal, because I think. You know, you know, you may get some really spectacular, you know, you know, letters of interest and say, you know, start thinking to yourself, you know, maybe. This person could have been on over that.
I I I I can't do it that way, John. What am I, you know, after I um encouraged, cajoled someone to be a member of the committee? And then on uh September sixteenth, I get another uh email from another good candidate, that I'm supposed to bump somebody off? You know, I I I'm not gonna do that.
Well, no, I think you 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 may have, you know, but you know, you 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 know, if people apply on on September, you know, tenth or twelve. Um, you know, you you can't foreclose them because they've, you know, they've, you know, they've put in late. I mean, they, you know, you've gotta.
So I I I I already have an overwhelming number of excellent candidates.
Yeah, I mean, I was impressed with all, with 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 your full six, what I was particularly encouraged about is, they were all new to this.
Right, right.
Which is what we're, you know.
I I I've done a lot of work to reach out to people and talk with people, um, and, you know, um. Uh, uh, you know, you know, I I I I. It it doesn't really work in a batch processing mode, but I can't really stop on September seventeen. And, you know, get, you know, what am, how many am I gonna have at that point, forty? And then, you know, to to arrange to talk to forty people, you know, it it's just impossible, right? Um, uh, it it, I mean, al- already, I'm talking to, I have to make appointments every day. To have phone calls with people to interview them, right, it's it's, um, and it, the fact that it's spread out over a month makes it doable. Um, you know, uh you guys have to do what you think is is right, but I I think.
I I I I just think if you, if you would have just, you know, you know, b- brought your, you know, eleven. Uh, you know, proposed members to us, you know, all at one time at the end. You know, you know, you may be, and and appreciate you're negotiating in in your own mind, you're making decisions as you're moving forward. But but make them public to us, you know, all at the same time. So everyone who's, you know, put in, um. You know, would have been in the process and been heard and been interviewed. I think that's what the, I think that's what the concern is.
Yeah, I I just don't understand why it doesn't.
And I realize that what what you have to do to get them.
I I I I don't understand the difference of doing it half and half. But, you know, um, you know, I I ob- obviously, you you guys, you, before, you were actually ever, the opposite opinion of me, so that's, that's. That's the, that's the game, right, so, um.
Is that the way you'd all prefer to do it, all at once?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yeah, yeah, um, I I'm I'm hearing some new concerns from David that I want to see if we could find a way to reflect. Um, which is just the volume of applications, um, and. Um, I'm comfortable with with announcing a very, with a a date that's, you know, not very far from now. Uh, less than a week even, um, but just to have a definite, um. A definite published date that that people know about. Um, and hopefully that will not, not, hopefully that will not make the number go up to, you know, forty or fifty.
No, I don't think it'll go to forty or fifty.
I I'm 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 amazed at how many applications we've had so far, it's wonderful. So I I I don't wanna, I don't wanna declare in advance that it's gonna stop.
It's in the mid twenties now, I don't know, I haven't counted them, uh, but it's in the mid mid twenties.
Great.
Right, so and I need eleven, right, so, uh, uh, um, uh, it's, and, uh, you know, I don't need any more candidates. Um, uh, and and it's not like, um, I'm scraping the bottle of the be- barrel for candidates. You know, I'm gonna be really sad to turn away a number of candidates. There are a lot of good people that have, um, asked to be on the commission. Um, so, uh, you know, I I I I'm already gonna be sad by telling more than a dozen people that they can't be on. I don't wanna be sad by having to tell two thousand people that they can't be on at the end. But but I I have to say that I would, you know, uh, no matter when we approve them. Um, you know, um, I I'm I'm dealing with these things w- in a fairly serial fashion, right? I'm not talking to all twenty-five people a day, right? I'm I'm taking them in roughly the order that they came in. Um, so sometimes not exactly, because there there are more people of one group than another that came in in a rush. And then, um, and then, and then trying to get to talk to everybody. Um, uh, and so. Uh, uh, I'm not trying to rank order people either, I mean, I I I suppose I could do that. But I, uh, you know, I, when I, when there's a a good candidate that, you know, meets the, um. The needs of the 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 commission, um, uh, you know. I I I put to my mo- my my list that as as a yes, and so, um. I I I intend to continue operating in that, in that fashion, and, um. You know, I I I just would rather not wait until then.
Um, um, further thoughts, your comments? So, what would I take you, uh, mem- members to say is that, um. Uh at our September fourth, fourteenth meeting, David should be ready to present us with his eleven-member committee.
And we'll see you. Before that.
Ye- yes, I can send, I can send everybody, but again, I, this really concerns me. That you guys wanna look through and choose the people out of the the whole list.
No, we're not.
No.
Not at all.
See your recommendations.
Uh, I I again, this is, I I mean, maybe I'm not at seeing that this is a level of scrutiny we don't use for other committees. We don't see all the people that don't make the cut for every other committee, we just don't see that. And 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 and, you know, it's it's a little bit. Funny, right, it it's, it's the, you know, it's, I I I don't know, it's not. It it's, it's the, you know, it's, I I I don't know, it's not, it's not. For for the, for the people who don't make the cut, you know, it's 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 not a nice thing, right? Whatever, you know.
No, with with other committees, there there are not multiple people applying for one spot. That's very rare. That's very rare. I mean, you saw it with an associate position on the finance committee where you had, I think, four or five people put in, but that's.
Well, that that's easy. There's only one brain there, the moderator. She just gets to decide. Uh, so that's very, that's very easy for her.
Did Jim?
I'm trying to articulate um why uh, why I'm, why I'm at such a different point of view than David's. Because I I get, I get your e- astonishment and irritation at the level of scrutiny on this process. So sort of reflecting back on the earlier discussion. What I heard was, um, I'm late, so I'm not gonna quite get this right. What I heard was some suspicion from Dean in particular that there would be uh, the 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 chance for a um. A sort of pre, a preconceived outcome of this process. That would be um delivered by choosing people who had particular points of view. And that's, out of that concern was where this uh odd uh review process came from. Um that we wanted to make sure that um, if there was a uh sort of political spectrum. Among the people that applied, that we were comfortable uh with that political spectrum. I don't know, Dean, is that, is that sort of why uh we're in this proposed process?
Yeah. Well, um, you know, I, I think it's always important, you know, it's a brand-new committee. It's a very um politically important committee. Uh, you know, there was lots of discussion on this of, well, we're in the moment. Well, okay, if we're in the moment, let's do this thing right. So I think, and it's not very often that we start a brand-new committee just from zero. And, you know, it's, it's certainly heartening that we've got lots of people who are interested in it. I would fully expect that I'll probably approve everything that David is recommending. But I think we've got two things. I think one thing that I think Fran asked Arsenal noted is, you know, there's some some fairness. That we put out that we were gonna, you know, be taking applications until the fourteenth. And I think the public and probably most of us thought that meant that we'd have. That there'd be a a group of people that probably David would start to to vet. But there'd be a group of people that would all be looked at kind of on a level playing field on the fourteenth or thereabouts. So I think that the process seems to have been changed from what I conceived and I think what a lot of other people had conceived. And I think, you know, my only point is that we should make sure that. That the committee represents a broad spectrum of all points of view and all political points of view. And I think it would be nice for all of us to know kind of who's applying for this. Which right now, you know, we've just seen the limited group that that David's recommended and they all seem like fine candidates. So um, you know, there's, there's no ulterior motive. We are, this is, this is a very interesting situation we find ourselves in. But I think these, those are kind of the rules that uh we had all agreed on when we started all this. And frankly, I would not have brought up any of these arguments if it not, had not been for members of the public had raised these issues. And uh, so I think it's it's worthwhile discussing it.
Okay, yeah, you know, like I, like I said, I see the handwriting on the wall. Um, do do we want to go um and and set an earlier de- deadline as Jim suggested, maybe Friday or something? This Friday, which is the twenty?
Um, as the last day for applications?
Yeah.
Um, well, if if people. If people are away, what do you think if people are away? Um, wha- wha- what is the date that you had set in in the online announcement?
It's, it said, it said the seventeenth, because that's what you had said at the last meeting.
Yeah.
But it also said the sooner the better.
And so was seventeenth the last day for applications?
Yeah, the, uh, it was a little bit ambiguous, uh and and whether we were deciding on the seventeenth or accepting the applications on the seventeenth.
Well, you know, I I think we're opening ourselves up to some problems if we sort of move up the deadline till Friday, the twenty-eighth. After we've said, it looks like it's the seventeenth. And then, you know, you know, people are saying, well, I wanted, you know, to apply, I was away and uh. You 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 moved the date up on me, i- is this committee cooked? You know, that we don't want to hear about. So um. You know, even announcing it on the fourteenth, some people may say, why did you, you know, you? I mean, I think you have all of your applications, you know, pretty much in um by the end of this month. You know, people will be back in town if they're. So, you know, you could, we could keep till the fourteenth to announce the committee and uh. But but don't move up the app, you know, don't move up the application deadline.
Well, that doesn't make sense if it's the seventeenth, right? If we announce it on the fourteenth, right? We, you know, I, Jim was suggesting uh that, you know, we we set a a deadline sooner. I I I think, I I think that the, you know, to have the deadline out and then just allow applications to build up. It's not doing anybody a favor.
But it's getting people to apply who want to participate, potentially participate in the process. And we shouldn't do anything, you know, to put a damper on it or 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 make the process suspect in any way. And if we said that the the date is the seventeenth.
With the, you know, that that that's very late, you know, that that means again, we wouldn't be into this until late October.
That's a different, that's a different issue than, you know, what were the rules we set for the application and decision process? That seems to be somewhere around September seventeenth.
Yeah, when we had set the Septe- I guess it was different assumptions. I mean, we had set the seventeenth. I wasn't thinking that we couldn't do anything until the seventeenth, you know, make any kind of decisions. Um, if 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 we're in that batch mode, if you will, I would propose that we set, we move the deadline up. I mean, we'll, we'll have already been open for almost a month.
Uh Jim?
Oh, so John, I I hear your concerns um about the perception of fairness. But I I'm thinking that a simple announcement that goes to the same places that we sent all this other announcement that simply says, wow. Thank you for all these, you know, we have a large number of applicants. It's very exciting. Now, now what we need to do is, you know, have a a sooner deadline so that we can, you know, sort through all these applicants and make decisions. And um, I think that's fine. There's gonna be people who want to be involved and there's gonna be other ways to be involved. There's gonna be testifying before the committee. There's gonna be whatever follow-on committees there are after this one. I I don't think we'd lose anybody. Um and I think we're having this open discussion right here uh that people can follow. Um and I think if an announcement is, you know, has has an open spirit to it, that just, you know, says, hey, we've, we've had lots of people. So we want to clarify that um, you know, we're we're not gonna take any more applications after Friday or, you know, whatever, the end of the month.
Well, 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 that 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 kind of cuts it short. Um, if 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 we said September, the app, you know, the application due date is September the eighth. And we would plan to um, you know, announce the committee on the fourteenth. You know, you know, does that work?
Well, that's, I mean, I just see. There's a lot more applications and he then has to talk to, you know, another twenty people. Um, that's.
Well, that's, that's good. You 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 shouldn't be cutting it, you know, if if, you know, that's great if that many people are are putting in.
That's really not that great, right? Because it just mean that I that I have to tell another dozen people no. Right? That that's not fun, that's not fun for anybody and it doesn't do, it doesn't help anything, right? It um, um, may- maybe we could do something in the middle like September fourth, um, which is the first Friday in in September.
Yeah, tha- tha- that's right before Labor Day.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Um, you know, that would, that would be, yeah, I mean. All right, what I would suggest is do September fourth as the deadline for applications. And the committee will be announced on the fourteenth at our meeting.
Sure, that's fine. And and do we need to vote on changing it to the fourth or we can just ask the town manager to change the announcement?
Are we comfortable with the fourth as a deadline, Paul? Dean? Joan? All right, we're good.
And in the meantime, we'll get the.
Yeah, I I I I'll I'll work with uh Lisa to send you the the uh the full list.
Okay, so we'll we'll take no action on uh consent, um. Um consent item sixteen then. Okay, is there any further business?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Okay, call the roll. Jim, you were spot on.
Oh, in predicting the length of the meeting?
Yeah.
But it's okay, it's not a pool I wanted to win.
Uh uh, motion to adjourn is not discussable.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, um, Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Uh, uh, Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.